Good evening, everyone. Board is reconvening from closed session and I just wanted to let you know that this evening Laura Coyle will be in charge of the meeting as part of our board transition plan that we set forth on several months ago. Take it away, Laura.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. You can all stand.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 23rd, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the February 23rd, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Yeah, there is one.
Thanks. Okay, you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Carey. Thank you for your hard work during this pandemic. And also I want to thank the administrators for their hard work. In the best interest of our children, excuse me, I'm here to ask that you consider reopening our schools for in-person full-day learning for the school year. The reasons this should be possible are the positivity rate for our community is very low. Various vaccinations have been rolled out, as everybody knows. Teachers who have been vaccinated, teachers who want to be vaccinated have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Our governor is soon to reveal plans for Phase 5 reopening. Other local school districts are reopening for full-day school. Sorry, I just ran up the stairs to get here on time. ISBE and Illinois Department of Public Health are recommending social distances of three feet instead of six feet. And then that's my comments for that, but on a separate note, with the election coming up soon, I implore residents to reach out to school board candidates, find out candidates' views and positions, and ask them how they would vote on various interests. I would hope the community would become involved and pay attention to what the school board is doing. You know, be involved, be active, so. Thank you.
Thank you. So Kevin, this is...
Sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Did you want to say your name?
Oh, sorry. Kevin Maron.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? So this is Dana Hayek.
Hi, everybody. I know I sent the board an email today, but I wanted to make this a public comment because I think it's important. Many members of the community that I have spoken to, and I've spoken to several, are very confused by the way that the board is operating currently. When we look at an agenda and we see certain items, and then we watch a meeting, some of those items are tabled or asked to be re-presented, or we seem to have come to terms with something, and we move forward, then we come to the next meeting, and the thing we thought was resolved is back on there, and there's no vote for the thing we said we were going to rediscuss, and everything's all over the place. It just seems like we're stuck in this stagnant kind of mode when we're trying, like, I understand, like, pandemic, we all feel kind of stagnant, and also, like, it's 10 days from spring break. We need to start moving forward and stop being stuck where we are right now. So I'm asking the board, I know the decisions are tough, I know the votes are hard, and also, they're necessary. So we need to start making some movement towards resolution and stop discussing and discussing and discussing. We could discuss this to death, but that won't bring any change or any sort of resolution for the students, and the students are what we're here for. They need the consistency, they need us to step up as grown-ups and make those hard choices, and I really feel like it's implored that we do it. And we stop, like, getting stuck in this runaround of all of these things. I think the admin have done a great job presenting, presenting, presenting. We need to make a choice, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana, there was one public comment submitted in writing, and that is posted on the agenda for the public to read, and Board members have that comment in their packets as well. Are there any other public comments at this point? Okay, so we'll move on. The next item is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. There is a resignation and a retirement. Number two, disposal of banned equipment. Number three, approval of SACID classroom lease. Number four, approval to enter into future pricing contracts with Vanguard Energy Services. Number five, approval of the March 2021 expenditure report, and number six, ratification of the February 2021 regular payroll. So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
All right, great. Moving on to information and discussion, we have the update on the 2021 school year.
Okay, and as what we've been doing, every board meeting this year is kind of giving our community and our board an update on where we're at and our thinking as we progress through the school year. And I always like to begin, I know I start the same way, but again, if this is the first time somebody from the community is listening in, making sure that we cover some of these things for our community. But again, we're in Phase 4 Tier 1 mitigation with the governor's plan, Restore Illinois Plan, and again, Phase 5 is when there's a substantial vaccine availability, effective treatment, or no new cases over the same period. So we're still not quite at that point. As a district, these are our guiding principles. It's always the health safety of our students and staff that are our priority. We want to make sure, though, that we're still providing a meaningful educational experience for our students. We are cognizant of their socio-emotional needs as well and addressing those, that we try to provide consistent stability, consistent stable models for our students and staff, and throughout the year that we're providing professional learning opportunities for our staff as well. Some of our data from the, since our last board meeting, so our last board meeting was on the 23rd. So you can see that we've had one certified staff member test positive, and year-to-date, we've had seven. Currently, we have five staff members that are quarantined due to exposure, and a total of 21 for the year, and then non-certified staff. We've had two non-certified staff since the last board meeting, and seven total. Student attendance, you can see kind of how our attendance since January 19th, since we returned to hybrid learning, and you can see the number of students for each building that have not been able to self-certify. And since the last board meeting, we've had one Miller student test positive for COVID. We've had two in-person students at the high school test positive, and then one student who is remote test positive. That's all been this last week, and it's related to athletics. Our winter sports are concluding. We're starting our spring sports. We did have three boys, basketball players, test positive for COVID-19 right at the end of the season, and so both basketball teams, the boys and girls, are currently quarantined because we had a sibling on the girls team. And then due to this also, we've had five teachers that were close contact with some of the students, and so they're currently quarantining as well. Local positivity rates, this is as of the end of last week. You can see where Westmont is. I can tell you, kind of looking at the beginning of this week, there does seem to be an uptick in our area. The positivity rates are climbing a little bit. But as of the end of last week, we're in really good shape. Every Monday, DuPage County publishes their school metrics, and so you can see that we're still in substantial, and that's because of the number of cases per 100,000. It's still over 100. That's what keeps it at substantial. The other areas are minimal, but again, you can see the arrows are trending in directions we do not like to see. They're starting to trend up a little bit, and so hopefully, next week, we'll see that trend reverse. The CDC has published new guidelines, transition levels, and that's what we've been focused on, and again, as long as we have those cases per 100,000, our positivity rate is very low, but it's the cases per 100,000 that keeps us in that substantial level. And then, there you go. And then the recommendation for what model districts can be in, and again, it's a local decision. If school districts feel that they safely can have in-person learning, they can continue with in-person learning. And then the second semester so far, we've been operating on this criteria for hybrid. Our positivity rate for the Westmont area needs to be under 10%, and then our cases per 100,000 need to be less than 200, and we've been able to maintain that. And as long as we maintain those thresholds, then we can remain in the hybrid model. If we do start to see increases in one of those areas, you know, we can, in some cases, some buildings may be able to stay in hybrid, other buildings may be able, may have to shift to remote. Right now, we're still in hybrid. And again, just summarizing, the positivity rate is less than 5%. Westmont's positivity rate was under 2%, and then as an average for our local community, we're 4.15%. We are seeing the age group under 20 is starting to, we're starting to see an increase. We saw it a couple of weeks ago, then it kind of reversed itself, and again, we're still, new cases per 100,000 are over 100, and we're currently in the hybrid. In terms of vaccine, schools are in Tier 1. The last couple of weeks, we've been able to get the staff who would like to receive a vaccine or indicate that they wanted to receive a vaccine, we're able to get vaccines, and so right now, we're about 76% of our staff have had at least one dose of the vaccine. There's roughly, well, close to 24% that have not indicated whether or not they've received the vaccine, they just have not requested one through the district, and so staff are not required to report to us because it's not mandated, and so I'm, you know, pretty confident more than 76% of the staff is vaccinated, but we know for sure the 76% that are. And that includes food service, custodial, we even were able to get the bus drivers that take care of our routes, we're able to include them in our clinic as well, so we're able to address that. Recently, and this is kind of what prompted the discussion for tonight, the ISBE and IDPH updated the school guidance, and so when we met at our last board meeting, we didn't have this updated guidance. The guidance came out on March 9th, so a week ago. The admin team, we met Thursday and Friday reviewing the guidance, and they're here to share with you some thoughts about how we might be able to proceed under the new guidance. And there are some things that have changed and some things that have not changed. We still need to have a remote model. It's not that we can just have in-person learning, but we have to offer a remote model. Bus capacity remains at 50, and so that's just something I have to work through with Westway if we end up adding more students. The social distancing is, now it's three to six feet. Before, it was a hard six feet, but the guidelines do allow for less than six feet, and that's true of fully vaccinated staff as well, that they can be less than six feet. If staff members are not fully vaccinated, they have to maintain six feet. The one thing to keep in mind, though, the, and it's on the next slide, but close contact, the definition of close contact did not change, though, so that's defined as 15 minutes, less than six feet, whether you're masked or not masked. And so, you know, we've been minimally impacted, even right now that we've had a couple of cases at the high school. You know, the student-to-student contact in the classroom, we'll be able to maintain six feet, and so just that student is quarantined. When we start reducing that to less than six feet, then you're going to have more students that will have to quarantine in that classroom a result of a positive case, so that's something that we need to keep in mind. Masking is still required, and then there is some guidance, and we're working with the junior high and the high school, and not tonight, but I will be sharing information with the board on our thoughts for those end-of-the-year events, those rites of passage, graduation, prom, and some of those events, how we think we can safely recognize our students this year, a little bit different than last year, but at the same time, fit with inside the guidelines. Again, indoor events, and this is kind of also a change that is beneficial. If you remember, in any space, it was a hard cap of 50, so regardless of how large your cafeteria was, how large your gym space was, auditorium, you're limited to 50 people in that space, and so now that's been revised so that as long as you can maintain six feet of social distancing, you can have more than 50 individuals in a space. But again, if you're talking once without a mask, you have to maintain the six feet of social distancing. We still need to do the certification. Our students do do it at home. They indicate whether or not they have any symptoms, and then this is just something to remind our community. But we have spring break coming up, and if people are traveling out of state, the, again, it's something that we're asking our families to be responsible with and to quarantine before returning to in-person learning. You can attend remotely, but when you're traveling out of state, you still need to quarantine when you return. So we've been talking about resuming a full day and what that potentially can look at. In a second, I'll turn it over to the building administrators, and they'll share with you some of their thoughts as well. One thing, we're, after this meeting and some feedback from the board, we're going to be surveying our families again, starting tomorrow, because obviously, we need to know if this is going to change any families' thinking in terms of remote or being in person. That's one of the drivers, then, that will impact transportation, because again, we're limited to 50 students on a bus. We currently, at the elementary level, have a couple of buses that are already pretty much at that cap, and so, you know, we'll have to work with Westway on accommodating additional buses and routing students and what they may, that may work on, look like. Still working on logistics with lunch, because again, part of it is, you know, being able to accommodate the students, but also there's the, we'll have multiple lunch periods, so cleaning surfaces in between, so we're working through all those logistics as well. Just in terms of timeline, our spring break is March 29th through April 5th. We're kind of limited in what we can do in preparation at Manning, because Manning is going to be having some asbestos work done there, so that some, one of the summer projects that we want to get done will be able to get done in a timely fashion, so it's going to limit access to Manning. The other thing, too, again, that travel, if you remember, after Thanksgiving and after the winter break, a lot of districts were taking, I can't remember the term, pause, a preemptive pause, because we knew families would be getting together and socializing and so forth. Well, we're not recommending that at this point, but it does seem that, you know, that week after spring break allows for some of, you know, if COVID is going to blossom and start to spread, there's a little bit of a buffer. The high school has to do their testing the week of the 12th, and so that's a modified schedule. As an admin team, we're thinking that we can move i-ready into that window as well, so that when we do make the move to full day, we'll have days that are truly for student learning and not disrupted schedules due to testing. So kind of unpack that all into that week of April 12th. And then the other piece, too, is, again, we had some of our staff get vaccinated the March 5th, the rest of the staff, March 12th. In terms of being fully vaccinated, it's 28 days before they'll receive their second shot, and then it's the two weeks before they're fully vaccinated, and so we're looking at April 26th then. We'll have our staff fully vaccinated. We'll get through all the testing that we need to do. We'll be able to work through all the issues with transportation with Westway, and so then we'd be able to move to a full-day schedule starting then and end of the year that way. And at this time, then, I'll, are you going first, Tim?
Sure.
All right. I'll turn it over to Tim, and Tim can talk a little bit about what that's going to look like for Miller, and then we'll...
Manning, Junior High, and High School.
Kevin, can I ask you a quick question? Are we going to have the building principals present, and then are you going to come back up for questions or comments at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening. Tim Wyler, Principal at Miller. Thanks for having us tonight to talk about future plans for the rest of the year. For Miller School, I presented at the last meeting. Our plan has not deviated too much, other than some questions that we had about the lunch and what it would look like to feed our students if we had all students in the building. So I'm going to focus a little bit on that component, but I'll kind of reiterate, we have 178 students in kindergarten, first grade right now. Of the 178, 93 are kindergartners, 95 are first graders, 16 of our kindergartners, starting tomorrow, will be remote learning only, so they'll be with a remote teacher, and 17 first graders tomorrow will be remote in first grade. We had two students move from remote today to hybrid tomorrow due to transportation and some gifts of ingenuity with some of the staff in the district. Thank you, Mrs. Clouder. 77 of our students are learning in person, at least a half-day in kindergarten, and 78 of our students are learning at least half-day in first grade, so it's kind of a makeup of our students. We do anticipate maybe a few students move to more of an in-person model if we did transition to full days, so, but I think we can accommodate a shift in either direction, whether it's remote or in-person, because it's no longer hybrid, because it's full day. Our arrival would still begin at 8:10 in the morning. So we're accommodating families that have students at both Miller and Manning, second through fifth grade, and our tardy bell will ring at 8:30, which does not change anything for our parents. Our dismissal, though, would be at 2:15, which would be about 15 minutes after the Manning dismissal bell for full-day learning, and we are recommending five consistent days instead of having a Wednesday PLC schedule. So that would be Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 2:15, to try to keep the end of the year consistent, if that was something that we were looking into finishing out the last five or so weeks of school. Some of the things to consider, which you might have in front of you, just homeroom teachers would need to be provided some more planned time, because they get a lot of their planned time on Wednesday afternoons when we have our PLC afternoon schedule. Staff covering homeroom teachers for planned time would be moving into their homeroom class, so students wouldn't have to go to another location. Our resource minutes that are currently being given in the afternoons, because that's when we keep 45 of our students that need some extra support, that would be spread out through the whole day, so we would need to do some rescheduling of our support throughout the full day. Guided reading and intervention was brought up at the last discussion. That also would not just be in the afternoon, it would be throughout the whole day, and we'd have to put some schedules together based on which teachers are providing students their reading intervention in the classroom. We'll definitely be spending more times outdoors. We're hoping the weather cooperates as we get to the end of the year. More coordinated mask breaks throughout the day, because we're keeping students in the building longer, and we would have to problem-solve on inclement weather days on how do students get their mask breaks when we can't go outside? So just some things to consider as, those are fine-tuned with the teaching staff as we start planning for these things, but the team, our billing leadership team, would make sure we account for all those concerns. Transportation, we might need more busing. That's kind of the major thing with transportation. Additional desks and removal of some furniture, if we're looking at the social distancing guidelines and have adding some more students to classrooms, because right now, our, most of our classrooms are kept at 14. There's two classes that can't hold 14, but we know those two classes, and they're just spaces that aren't typically a homeroom class for the year. We would continue with our nurse that's in the building. She's there whenever students are there, so as of right now, we have students in the building from 8:30 to 2:30 every day, and a nurse is in the building all five days during the week, starting last week when we added Wednesdays. We would work on building some outdoor spacing and possibly painting circles and areas outside, as we've seen other schools do on the blacktop, and making sure students are staying within their area, because that is a place where they are mask-free, so we definitely want to keep them six feet apart and not, not three feet when they don't have their masks on. Hallways, we have had tons of success with parent volunteers. Every day, we have at least one for two hours. Most days, two, helping out near the washrooms, making sure students are getting in the washroom, getting back to class. There's no more than three students in the washroom. There's other opportunities that we would love to have parent volunteers in the hallways and the cafeteria as we can use all hands on deck for parents that want to volunteer some time and use the sign-up genius the same way we do now to get parents to step up and assist in that endeavor. So the lunchroom, the big topic for us. We've been feeding students, up to 45, every, four days a week. And on Wednesdays, we have 18 students that stay with us. So we're very, we're experienced feeding students in one space. The nice thing that we have right now is every student has their own desk, so they don't share spaces. That would be one of the pieces that we would need to problem-solve. And Mr. Smith and Mr. Smith, so Mr. Dave Smith and Mr. Joe Smith, we met over the past couple of weeks trying to figure out the best way to keep students in the cafeteria in groups. And so we identified that if we had about 100 tables or desks and all students are facing one direction in the groups that they come in, we can, well, we would only have to clean each desk twice, which means each student would only, would share a spot with one other student. So it would require 20 minutes of cleaning after the first group of students and 20 minutes of cleaning after the second group. And then those desks would be cleared for groups three and four. So we would never have more than one tabletop shared by more than two students at any given time in the cafeteria. We would have, we would start with one group facing one way. And then we would have chairs set up on the opposite end of the table at a different spot. The second group would come in, they would face the other way. And so it would allow our staff and our volunteers to help clean the tabletops in a orderly and timely fashion. And then our maintenance crew can come back after the last two lunches and clean at their convenience because they wouldn't need to be under a time schedule. So there'd be about 40 to 45 minutes that would require some extra hands on deck, some volunteers, possible custodian and staff to assist in the gym. I'm one of the people that can also assist as long as I could wear some jeans and a T-shirt on those days. So I think we're good there. We definitely want to stay in the gym. And following lunch, we would be providing at least a 10-minute mask break, washing of hands, using the washroom before the students go back to their classes. We would need some more supervisors from the staff. We would need more staff assisting with lunch and mask breaks. So we would be looking to the staff to see who would want to step up and take on some of those roles. And right now, with the trash, instead of students getting up and moving, the trash bin comes to them. And that's one of the tools that we want to keep in place. So we have five or six rolling trash bins and students don't have to get up to go throw their items out. And there's one more thing. Just making sure, oh, it would be a silent lunch because we don't want students socializing and talking with food in their mouth. So we would be pretty stern on making sure while students were eating, it's not the time that they socialize when they have their masks off and food in their mouth. So that's one thing that's been working really well. And know it's tough, but students, you know, they're in the school and following safety protocols for the safety of others.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
For your lunch, are you saying that you're putting, is there time to put that time between with the cleaning? So periods where, like, what's the time period between one group and the next group?
So, right now, without any time in between lunches, let's just use, we start at 11 o'clock. And we try to feed our kindergartners first. At 11 o'clock, our first group, Group A, would come down to the lunchroom. They would be sitting at Group A's desks, which is a chair and a desk that's separate from the second group. So they have about 20 minutes to eat. They would leave to go out for their mask breaks. No one would be sitting in that chair or that desk. It would not be connected. It would be a total separate desk and a total separate chair facing the other direction that Group B would come in and eat. So that second 20 minutes or 25 minutes is when the first tabletop would be cleaned. One thing that Mr. Smith, Mr. Joe Smith and I talked about is, instead of using the spray mechanism, we can use a solution with a rag that will take care of the tabletop. If people are going to be cleaning while students are in there, even though they're not near them, it would be safe for them to be near because we don't want them breathing in the sprayer that happens every night. But it would not be the same tabletop as someone else that's in the lunchroom, sitting and eating. And then we also talked about having a buffer, like a five-minute buffer, if we did want to get in and do a quick clean before the next group came in. So we're just trying to, four lunches over an hour and 20 minutes is about what we're looking at. And if we need to tighten that up, we can. Or we can add a five-minute buffer in between and start lunches maybe a little before 11 and they'll end right around 12:30.
Thank you. Can you just remind us, Tim, how much in-person instructional time does this add?
This adds roughly like an hour 45 minutes of instruction time?
A day.
Because if you got to, when you're comparing it to a typical student that goes home at 11:45, when you're comparing it to the group of 45 that's in the cafeteria, since they are already in the habit of eating lunch and it's about an hour 45 minutes to two hours where we embed a lot of play-based, hands-on activities, brain breaks. They go to their homeroom classes right now. But that afternoon block would be restructured because we wouldn't need the cafeteria for the 45 students. They would be back in their classes and rotating around any kind of specials or activities we have in the classes in the afternoon.
Are there any other questions for Tim?
Well, I just want to be clear. You're saying 1:45 to 2 hours, that's per day?
Per day.
I don't think there's any more questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. So the last time we met, we presented four options for Manning. And we just fully moved into, moving into option one this week. So now we're talking about option four for another change in entering full day. So currently, what we've added, based on our last meeting, was we've added Wednesdays in the morning. And then we've also added instruction of small groups from 2:00 to 2:45, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, depending on the grade. We've also integrated live library into class. So now, we're going to talk about the shift to full day where I'm going to, Tim and I share a lot of the same components. I'm going to talk about the things that are different because we are more than double the size. So at Manning, currently, we have 383 students. Our teachers are doing a great job in being really flexible with any family that continues to want to come into hybrid, knowing that they cannot add the bus at this time. Day by day, we're getting kids to come in. So we really support that model and maximize our quality time. The big overhaul for our schedule is that we have to start from scratch, which we can absolutely do. But once again, as I said before, it's that cost benefit. So I just want to make that very clear. And I'm really impressed, once again, with our faculty who came together on Monday after we met on Thursday and Friday to share their comments. We started brainstorming some logistical pieces and that's what's presented to you. So with that master overhaul schedule, we would introduce specials again. So those specials get taken away from second-grade small groups. We added that in as a component we felt was needed for our youngest learners. So each grade level would get one special in-person each day. So that is a benefit and something that I know was asked of us last time. Resource minutes for all students need to be rescheduled. So that includes anything from a push-in model of small groups to pull out for speech, OT, which is occupational therapy, and any additional resources like social work groups and things like that. Additional reading groups, which Manning typically has a name of RAP, will also need to be completely rescheduled. We tried to think of keeping that same model we have now from a hybrid and just flipping it into full day. And it just doesn't work for teacher planned time really specifically. And then the last thing is just thinking about accommodating mask breaks, supervision, and the huge coordination that it takes to make sure we maintain spacing. And no two groups are out at the same time where we wouldn't be able to space. We do have a lot of space, but kids like to move around. So we want to just make sure we have a clock schedule of when kids can come out. And it's not just, okay, when we notice we're getting a little antsy, let's take a break. So it would be scheduled. Transportation, we already talked about. So getting those commitment forms from parents as soon as possible so that we can update the bus schedules once again. Classroom considerations, most of our classrooms are pretty cleared out. That furniture is currently being stored in the gym, which is a consideration we have to think about and problem-solve in a couple of minutes. But we might have a couple more pieces of furniture that need to be moved. And currently, all second through fourth graders have a device that is in the building that they do not take back and forth. So we need to make sure that every student that comes into a full day has a device so they're not tracking back and forth. Fifth graders fit into the model of 6 through 12 that carry back and forth. Nurse considerations. So with 383 students, you can imagine there's lots of needs in a half-day model. We have a lot of students that take afternoon medications, though their medications are currently not in the building. So we need to make sure that every student who has medications in the afternoon has those on-site to administer in the PM. We also need to be mindful of our lunch spaces with allergies. Are we going to have specific tables or areas? And how are we cleaning those? Especially because kids will have to share those spaces. Even with the turnover time, we just want to be really specific of what are nut-free, dairy-free spaces that our kids can use and be safe. Outdoor considerations, we would love to be outdoors more. So I think that as much as we can use it, it would be highly scheduled and we would maximize it. One thing we need to think about, when we head outdoors, where do those remote learners go? So being mindful, we do have, most of our kids who are going to be in are already in, even if, you know, even if we were to go to full day. So how do we make sure those students feel included and are still receiving those opportunities in a remote way? Hallway and bathroom considerations. We tried out the awesome volunteer opportunity that Miller had. I think he stole all of them. But we would definitely need parent volunteers to monitor the bathrooms. We before had a system where teachers would take their classrooms to the bathroom. It's really just hard to do in this model. So having parent volunteers on the first and second floor is really important. And then thinking about in the basement bathroom, our lunches would have to start at 10:30. They would go until 1 o'clock just because of the sheer number of students that we have in the spacing. And there are two plans. One, to do lunches right back-to-back and have two grades eat at a time. That's a lot of cleaning in a short amount of time. Or we have one grade eat at a time and spread it over the course and gives us a little bit more time, especially if we're shorthanded, like Tim said. I don't know if I'm going to be wearing jeans, but I can put on some clothes and scrub as we need. Additional lunch considerations is that we really need to think about where all the furniture in the gym is going to go. We do have that asbestos abatement cleaning. And we will be putting more furniture in there. So the only thing I'm thinking of right now, as we talked with Mr. Joe Smith, is potentially renting pods to store that. You can't put it in spaces that would be a hazard for evacuation if ever needed. Let's see. The last thing I want to talk about is just subbing considerations because the rest, Tim did a really good job of just sharing. And just logistical pieces that we can definitely work through are the subbing considerations. Some of you may have seen it on screen that we are all on-call as things come up throughout the day. And we do have internal subbing and our specialist teachers really help with that. We've had situations every day that I can think of. So our internal subs would pull from specials and our reading specialists first if we can't find external subs. We even have our permanent sub working to help out with an FML leave position right now. So just being mindful that, yes, we have a scheduled live special in-house on that day, but it might be pulled if we need it. Because obviously, having that classroom have supervision and subbing for the full day is really important. And another thing that we had planned for, so, and we have to plan out a certain amount of time based on law, is that we schedule our IEP meetings and 504 meetings, typically in the afternoon and on Wednesdays, to make sure that we are not interrupting that core instruction. And we would have to look at how that subbing looks in the afternoon since many of those dates, all the way through the end of the year, including some fifth-grade transition meetings have been scheduled, will need to have coverage for the classroom teachers. That was a laugh. I'm sorry. Any questions?
Is it the same additional instruction time?
I would say it's about 30 to 45 minutes more when you're thinking about it. It is not as big of a gain as Mr. Wyler, but our configuration is different. So we just added 45 minutes to our day this week with a small group remote. So when we're talking about instruction, you have to account for lunchtime, mask breaks, recess, bathroom, things like that.
So this is 30 to 45 minutes
A day.
After this week?
So Yes, after this week.
And that's additional in-person time?
Well, in-person time is different. There's definitely more. It's, so you're usually getting out at 11:30 and now we're getting out at 2:00. So that time is
Instructional time within that in-person time?
Instructional time is 30 to 45 minutes, yeah.
They're getting instructional time at home during that?
Correct, yes. That's what I was trying to do in that comparison last time. So when we made that addition from option one, we strategically did. And it was a big shift in teachers. It's another change as we've talked about that consistency piece. But adding another layer of small groups, a lot of teachers decided to focus on math for that to build up that quality instruction.
Thank you.
Okay, it's just, all right, I'll try to blow it up a little bit here. Yeah, does that work? Okay, thanks for having us. It's nice to go third because my colleagues did a really nice job in presenting a lot of information with particulars. And so we are going to, we've already shared a more depth, in-depth document with you. It's multiple pages, it's in Google Docs. So you can take a look at that. We're going to go over just the overviews right now. My brother, Keith, who is at home, he has said to me in the past through my parent communication, he says TLDR. My Panther parents know what that means. It means too long, didn't read. So we're going to try to make things a little bit more concise. I wanted to thank the feedback from the staff that we received. And you can thank my brother later because this hopefully is going to be a little bit shorter. All right, so let's get right into it. Ms. Quatron?
Okay, so when John and I sat down to figure out the possibilities for a full-day schedule, we quickly realized that it would make the most sense to use our remote learning schedule as our template. It offers us the most structure. We can easily insert our times of the days and the periods in there. It also is the schedule that we've used for the most of the school year, so the most chunk of the school year. And finally, it's the schedule that's in Skyward. So when students come back full-time in-person, they'll be able to just use their Skyward schedule and the confusion will be lessened for them.
Exactly what Ms. Quatron said. So this is what it would look like with the times that are added to it. And with this, we would have school days that are six and a half hours long. A half hour is lunch.[1720.57] A half hour is lunch, a half hour is considered transition or break time. So looking at this, as Ms. Quatron mentioned, as Amy mentioned, I never call her Ms. Quatron, it is aligned to Skyward, so that's very important. Chris Springer loves us for that reason. Additionally, it's going to allow students to use Otis, which is our student, or I'm sorry, yes, our student learning platform. And so what that means is that our teachers are not going to have to resend out links, and they're not going to lose different assignments and grades and such like that. We do have, you might notice, if you're really paying attention to time during fourth period, there is a mask break that is built into that. That doesn't mean that everybody needs to take it during that period of time. As a matter of fact, we would rather that they take it kind of staggered, right? And they would be able to go outside. We're identifying certain areas outside of the class, or outside of the school, that will be six feet apart. We're going to make a really cool stenciled Panther paws on certain areas that they can stand, and they can know this is a safe area to take off my mask for a little bit. So lunch areas, it sounds like they've been a challenge, and they have for us as well. Amy's going to go into a little bit more detail, but it really comes down to what the survey comes back from the parents. So we have a decent idea what our numbers are per grade level so that we can, you know, just move things back and forth. Our largest group is going to go into the village, into the commons, though, and Amy will talk more about that. So STAR and RESOURCE, if you notice, are at the front end and the back end, that's our bookends. And that really helps in regards to our students that need some extra support. It helps with our SEL program as well. And then it's going to help also with our students with goal setting, work completion. I know some of the teams have discussed kind of working on a mini win time in between that. That's not every single grade level, but they're trying to work something out. Because we would lose Wednesdays in this, because we're going to be going to school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And on Wednesdays, it's just going to be shortened a little bit because of PLCs. So with this model, and there's a little discrepancy in the long version of this, this would be 43 minutes on a regular basis of that core content in the expo and the PE classes. I get to keep going, all right. So there is things to work out with our food service, obviously. We're trying to determine what the spraying looks like and the cleaning is, we're working that out right now. We, let's see here, we're trying to keep six feet of separation, and in some of the classes, we may be able to do that. I don't know when the last time you went to Westmont Junior High is, but because of our amazing HVAC system and adding walls after the 70s, it was a really popular thing not to have walls. When we did that, because of HVAC, some of the classrooms are pretty much twice as big as others. We have three classrooms that size. So for those classrooms, six feet, no problem at all. The other classrooms, three feet is going to be more realistic. Passing periods break from five minutes down to three minutes, and there's a slight change in that. And for the most part, we're looking at students moving from place to place, if possible. There are some that it might make more sense for them to stay put, because we have some large individual classes that, like our, like our, help me out here, enrichment classes. So our seventh and eighth grade, she didn't help me out. Is there a seventh grade enrichment classes and honors literacy? You want to go over the additional?
Yeah, but I think you just took one of mine, but that's okay. So we are going to follow that, the remote learning schedule, so I'm just adding in some details here, additional details. And then, as John mentioned, we might have some students moving in core classes, we're not quite sure. We have to find out how many students are going to be coming to us full-time in person, and then we'll be able to make that decision. So as you know, right now, our teachers are the ones that are moving around the core content classrooms. We might need to have the students moving. We know that we definitely will need the students moving from their core classes to expo and PE, so that's a definite. But that's something that we wanted to let you know about, because there will be movement, more movement in the school. We won't, as John mentioned, we're not going to have Wednesdays, so the students will have consistent schedules, Monday through Friday. But they will be leaving early on Wednesdays at 2:15 to accommodate our PLC time. And we won't take away from their core content classes. What we will do is just shorten up that STAR resource time at the end of the day. So some additional considerations that we wanted to talk to you about would be transportation. We want to make sure that we're working in relation with the other schools and that our schedule will work out with theirs. We also know that we might need to add another bus to our fleet at this point, because we have one bus that we might exceed the 50 maximum students. Lunch, we are going to have lunch at the same time, so the entire school will have lunch at the same time. Our largest grade level would use the commons. Our second largest, probably the media centers, and then the other grade level would be staggered in some of the larger classrooms. With that being said, we are going to need supervision, of course, in all of these places, and then we'll work through what that cleanup looks like. We also know that we want to set up our students for success, especially those that haven't been in our building this year. So we're planning on having a mini standards day. In a normal school year, we have standards day in the beginning of the school, the first week of school, so that the students know our expectations of them as a Panther. And so what we want to do is create videos for them. So we'll send those out to them before they come into the school, and then possibly have a mini standards day when they come into the school. And then also furniture, that's going to be a big consideration for us, we're going to need some help. We have lots of movement, we're going to take out the tables in the commons and use desks instead, so the students can be six feet apart. We have soft furniture, our soft furniture from the media center, we're moving into the commons area by the lockers. We have desks that need to be moved, a lot of furniture that we will be moving around.
When we first heard about the move and some possible changes, we, I hiked it down to Pleasantdale and saw they've been in-person full day for a little bit. So I got a tour around, got to see what they're doing, so we can emulate some of their successes and move forward from there. The staffing concern, there's, we do need someone for an overflow area. And so we're looking at having the media center be our overflow class area if necessary. So even if we're at three feet distance, there may be that one or two days that we've got an extra person in there. We obviously don't want to crunch them in, so we need to have an overflow area. That wouldn't be the same person consistently that is going to that overflow area, but we need to have contingency plans, right? And so we don't want to bring people closer than three feet. So the overflow area would look like having a student go into the media center, they would log in to that class through Zoom. It's not what we would want, but it's what we might need to do in order to try to keep everybody safe. Next, there's currently only 10 classrooms that are being used on a regular basis at Westmont Junior High School with students in them, and it's going to go up to 25 with this plan. So disinfecting is something that we need to have a little bit more of an understanding of what we can ask, what we can have, go on. And so that's something we're working with Mr. Joe Smith on. And, let's see, I think that's all I have on this one. So we are open now, I believe. There's obviously a lot of detail to the plan, but once again, trying to think of Keith and you all. Any questions?
I guess I'm going to ask the same question that Laura and Gary did. So how much instructional time per day will this add if the change is made?
Sure, so it depends on which day you're talking, because obviously Wednesday was Wednesday, right? So that's a full day. That's shave off 45 minutes because of early dismissal, or no, an hour. But, so that's five and a half hours. Basically, scratch out a half hour for lunch. So right around four and a half hours on Wednesdays, that's four and a half hours of new instruction every day on a Wednesday. And then I'd say, because of the lunchtime change, because keeping in mind, we tend to have students from 8:30 to 3:15. It's just an A group and a B group, so they've been getting that kind of instruction. So we're looking somewhere around an hour to an hour and 15 minutes a day of more instruction, because the students were taking their core content area classes, they had the option to take them in school, in front of the teachers. But then they were getting the rest of their classes, whether it was RESOURCE or STAR or EXPLOR or PE remotely. So not a huge change on, not a huge change Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, but a pretty major change on Wednesday, and it all being in-person instruction as an option for our parents or for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Urban.
Thank you, thank you.
And next we'll hear from the high school team. Just a point of clarification, originally the high school team was going to be here tonight to talk a little bit about their hybrid schedule. I think our time is better served, talking about what the full day looks like, and they do have information in board docs that does provide more detail on the hybrid schedule.
What are the full day schedules, right? Can you help me? So, Jack Baldeman, principal, with our administrative team, Dr. Kevin Weck and Ms. Megan VerVink. So as Mr. Carey said, our focus tonight is on offering a full-day schedule that, I know this has been an important question, that will allow for about an extra hour plus of instructional time on a daily basis and an extra four-plus hours on Wednesday. So it's a pretty significant increase there. This is our current placement of students in second semesters. I won't just read this to you, but you get a good sense of where our students, what percentages are in hybrid and which are in remote. Currently in fourth quarter, so we've launched the new schedule, and it's overall gone well. You know, Mr. Carey mentioned the issue with the basketball team, which was, you know, a tough consequence. But overall, I think things are going fairly well. We have many students who have rejoined us and who are coming four days a week. And we do have accelerated a lot of instruction on Wednesdays, so that's occurring. Currently, there's four hours and 20 minutes of in-person instruction daily. And then there's also small group work in the afternoons, asynchronous work from 1:15 to 2:45. So that's part of our schedule. Wednesdays are really where students are required to attend this day, we've made that completely clear. If a teacher is scheduling time or if there's conference time, students must attend, it's not optional. So there's been a lot of work that's been data-driven. The students who are most in need and most at risk are getting teacher help and reteaching and support. There's enrichment activities, primarily right now the SAT and the AP exams, we're coming into testing season, so that's been accelerated, if you will, and it's based on a weekly data review process from every Tuesday. And of course, teachers host office hours and meet with students by appointment, and that's also driven by student requests. So return to full days. In a moment, you'll see, our teachers came up with some options for full days. And I just want to be upfront, we're still tweaking that, because there are some considerations, especially around the lunch hour and some break time for the kids who are remote learning. But we do have several full-day option schedules that have been developed by our teachers, and then Kevin and Megan are fine-tuning it with our department coordinators, and also including our union leadership. So some of the things that are considerations are minutes of instructional time. They will increase fairly significantly, about an hour a day and then an extra four hours on Wednesday, because we would like to maintain our professional learning community time on Wednesdays and interventions for students most in need. But currently, we don't have any quote-unquote structured time, we'd have more traditional classes on Wednesdays. Managing of lunches, even though there's been some lifting of the guidelines, we still have some considerations. So we are probably going to have to move from two to three lunches, which we can do with our schedule, and then be kind of flexible during that time and allow for some more intervention and reteaching. But that is going to be something that we have to address. Also, alternative spaces for lunches and lunch supervisors would come with that, but that's something we can problem-solve around, and transitions for cleanings. Allowing for, when we go back in person, minutes of computer and Zoom time for the remote students, because of course, that's going to increase their instructional time, and we want to be sensitive to how long they're on the screen. There are some transportation issues. But, and we also want to continue our intervention, our enrichment and support programs, not just during the school day, but also continuing that on Wednesday. And then, of course, as Mr. Carey mentioned, the week of the 12th, we have our SAT, which is required of all juniors for graduation, and it's really a big deal. I mean, it's, our school report card is based heavily upon that. AP is coming up, access testing, so that has an impact on our school schedule. There's a few questions, where would the students go for overflow and who's going to supervise them? We're problem-solving around that. We've had a little bit of that before the CDC guidelines were increased, but not as, but we were able to manage that. So teachers would send down excess students, there weren't that many, to the media center, and then they would continue with their learning remotely. Some other concerns and questions, you know, with more students in the building, the contact tracing becomes a little bit more difficult, especially in a high school setting, because there's no way to really do the schedule where you just keep students in pods. So we're continuing to consider intervention time, and we definitely want to maintain our professional learning community time on Wednesdays. So a quick overview here, the schedule would be on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday from 8 till 2:45, our traditional schedule. But it would look a little bit differently, because we'd have to factor in a third lunch period, and we do during that period some intervention time.
There is a C option, it's just not showing up on the screen. So we'll, there are some details for each of the three plans that are tentative, proposed, possible schedules for a full day. But the summary piece is not showing up on there.
Okay, so, do we, so when I write, so, once again, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, 8 till 2:45, traditional time, just heading a little bit differently because of the concerns with lunch and interventions. Wednesday would be the 8 till 12:30 with a lunch break and then interventions and PLC time for teachers. And then here are, and I'll let Kevin and Megan speak to this, because they're working with our teachers and our department coordinators and our union, as I said, to make sure that we are getting a plan that will work. But you see that we're going in our more traditional full-day schedule. There is a Zoom break for kids who are remote, that's one option. Then the B2 has three lunch periods, as you see laid out here, that we're still fine-tuning, with intervention time, reteaching time backed up against the lunch periods, but still a seven-period day with more instruction. And then the Plan C is, once again, just, we're still fine-tuning through those options. But wherever we land, we'll go to full-day learning, we have full-day schedules, and we're still addressing the needs of the remote students and maintaining some interventions for students who are most in need, because it's a different way of learning, and we're experiencing, for some kids, bigger struggles than typical. So, do you want to, are there any, want to add anything to the schedule question?
It's just, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday is like an extra hour of instructional time. Plus, like Jack said, the Wednesdays now will be from 8 to 12:35 with the after-school support for our students most at risk and the PLC time.
So can I ask a question about your recommendation? I hope I'm not moving ahead.
Yes.
So the, out of those three plans, they're all full-day, they all have three lunch periods. Some of them have more increased instructional time than others. So what is your recommendation as a team from those three?
I wouldn't say that at this time we would feel comfortable making one. We wanted to be transparent with the things that we've been talking through with the staff, but it still needs to be discussed with the staff about what they, what we can collaboratively come to a decision about. I mean, we've really only worked with the department coordinators, too, and not really talked to the entire staff, just because of the quick turn that we've made, the quick pivot we were trying to make to ready for this evening. So these are just three possibilities, and again, it may even be something not-
Option D.
Option D, based on the feedback from the staff, and also based on the feedback that we get from the parents and the community of who's going to be returning to this full-day option. So, I mean, I think, too, at the high school, we have to consider, high schoolers sometimes are like, oh, today is not my day on the hybrid day, so, you know, I'm going to, or it is my day, but I could just stay home, I'll sleep in. Well, if we're doing full-day in-person, it's not, and you're not on an AB schedule anymore, and that's not really an option. You can't just wake up one morning and decide, I'm going to be remote today. So I think that will impact some of the decisions that families make, which will impact our numbers, which will impact kind of how our schedule needs to look.
Thank you.
And we have to work with our team to figure out what the intervention time really looks like, to make sure it's organized, it's effective, and it really meets the needs of our students. So we're going to work with the faculty to figure out what this plan, out of those three, is best for everyone.
And it's going to mean kind of reconfiguring, potentially slating kids for what would be like a homeroom, so that they have a place for attendance and accountability, and someone to monitor that period, so that kids aren't just wandering around willy-nilly with a place nowhere to go and nowhere to like really get invested in their learning. So that would be another piece that we have to consider, is really overhauling in Skyward and assigning these things, assigning students to teachers and to classrooms and making that time structured.
So for the last, I have a high school-specific question before we get to general things. So for, I know that the month of April is very important for high school, when, especially at our high school, with the tremendous amount of AP classes that we have and students preparing for tests in early May, am I correct in the AP? for tests in early May, am I correct in the AP? So how does the, how does the timing look for the planned full day and the timing of what is needed for increased instructional time to get, to get ready for the AP testing? So right now, we're talking about an April 26th start, but that's just two weeks before AP test occurs.
It's just a week before.
A week before.
Correct.
So that seems like we're getting the increased instructional time for high school, just looking at one building, too late.
Part of the intervention time can be used for, you know, helping our students in the AP classes prepare for the exams that are coming up. So it's going to give them some additional time, plus the instruction time that they're going to get, that's a boost also.
On the Wednesday?
No, that could be, that's also with the other schedules as well.
Gotcha.
There's going to be additional time for teachers that work with their AP students as well.
But we have ramped up Wednesdays too. I mean, I'm not saying that we ever were slacking, but we were always, we're ramping up even more at this time, so.
Even in a traditional year though, when we're not in a pandemic and COVID is not a concern, our teachers do a lot to ready our students for the assessments that they have accountability for. They host testing sessions late in evenings, on the weekends, all time, all days and times to make sure the kids are confident and ready to go. I don't know, I can't say that the six minutes per period is going to make a difference and impact the way the students perform on the assessments based on the amount of other opportunities for intervention and support with their teachers in even a more small-group setting, which could probably give them the support that they need to be successful. And we are already in the assessment window. Right now, we're in the middle of access testing and our schedule works really well right now because our students' access testing are testing from like the 12:35 time to the end of the daytime, so it's not taking them away from the instruction. And then when we have SAT, we have a contingency plan to have students work asynchronously and remotely to focus on SAT during that week in a modified schedule. And we've been planning with the interventions each week to support getting kids ready for AP, SAT, et cetera, outside of the time that is just the instructional time in the day.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Just want to follow up on Dana's question a little bit in terms of the start time. And again, you know, just as an example, right now, the high school, we had two students in person that were positive and five teachers are quarantining. And, and, you know, I've got to say this about the high school, but this happens in all of our buildings. You know, it's a credit to the high school administration and the staff that they pieced it all together to keep, you know, keep us in hybrid during that time. And Lindsay and Tim alluded to that too, about how they utilize their staff to cover subbing and so forth. If something were to happen the next day or two where possibly one, definitely if two teachers have to quarantine, the high school would have to flip to remote. I mean, that's, that's the reality. You know, there are, there are some things about being a small district that makes us a little bit more nimble and more flexible, but at the same time, our bench isn't as deep as a larger district, and so that's one of the challenges. Right now, our teachers won't be fully vaccinated until we approach that April 26th day. I just got from the IDPH today, and they, they send us updated guidance all the time. And so there's been a lot of questions about what does it mean when teachers are fully vaccinated in terms of quarantining and those types of things. It's not until a teacher is fully vaccinated that they do not have to quarantine. So if they are close contact in between two doses, they have to quarantine. If they are in close contact after the second dose, but before the two weeks after that second dose, they have to quarantine. So what we're experiencing at the high school, even though we have, you know, the majority of the staff has had at least one dose, in some cases, their staff may have gotten a second dose from another provider, we're still, nothing has changed there. And so it's not really until we hit that point on the 26th that we're confident that a teacher who has a close contact wouldn't need to quarantine. And so that, that does make a difference for us in the planning. And that, as well as moving some of those assessments into that April window so that we have undisrupted contact time with students versus having a lot of modified schedules.
So you mentioned that quarantine with the two basketball players and it affected the five teachers. So if our teachers were fully vaccinated, if these, if these five, and we don't, we don't know, and I understand we can't ask that, but if these five were fully vaccinated, more than two weeks passed their second dose, they would not have had to have quarantined?
Correct.
And how would these updated guidelines, outside of the teachers not having to quarantine, how would they have affected, because it sounds like both of the basketball teams are quarantining right now? Would, would that have had, would these updated guidelines have affected that in any other way besides just the, besides the teachers wouldn't necessarily have to quarantine? Would it have affected those student quarantines?
It would depend on what the classroom looked like that the students were in. So if they were, if the high school in order to accommodate their students had to put desks closer than six feet, then you, you know, students who are sitting around that student would also have to quarantine as well. So anybody who's within that six feet for 15 minutes.
Okay, so it could have expanded that quarantine.
Right, right. And that's, you know, our students have seven classes?
Yeah.
So that would be seven classes that, that's where Jack referenced the contact tracing. It's a little bit easier at the elementary level because they're self-contained, but at the high school level, when you're contact tracing, it's following that student's schedule, their teachers, what students they come in contact with throughout the day.
I think I heard Jess trying to ask a question. Jess, do you have a question?
I do, thank you so much, Laura. This is Jess, I'm at home tonight, but I just have a question about the, because I, I hear you and I feel like making sure that there are people to staff in classrooms is really important. But I guess what I'm wondering as far as the close contact and if a teacher were to come into close contact with a student who tests positive, I guess my question is, how often is that happening at the high school? Like I can see a scenario where the students are less than six feet apart, but are our teachers for the most part, six feet or more apart from the students when they're in the building?
I think, you know, our teachers try to maintain that six feet, but the reality is if a student needs assistance and the, the teacher is going to go by the student and provide that assistance, and as much as we try to stress maintaining six feet, that's, that's the reality, that it will happen.
Okay, thank you.
So Kevin, I guess my question is because these guidelines keep changing and that this will come up as an issue. So, I mean, we're told over and over again and the scientific data points to if you have received your first vaccination, you are in very good shape, especially if you are using it in conjunction with masks and all of the other protections. So I could envision that changing yet down the road. So if I'm taking the bird's eye view, the balcony view here of all of this, because we get lots of information here tonight, my preference would be that, I, I mean, I would like to see us go back sooner than, than waiting for that full vaccination date. And maybe that will come about because there's a change in the guidelines between this week and next week or the week after that. But I just would like us to keep that in mind in, in the planning that you guys are doing, so that hopefully if there's a change, that we might be able to move more rapidly to full day rather than just basically the last month of school.
So Joel, can I comment on that? The current guidance, I've read this like three times, says on this, the first paragraph is, is bolded, "This joint guidance supports the return to in-person instruction as soon as practical in every Illinois community." And I've read it three times and I might have missed it, but being fully vaccinated is not a requirement. It is for the maintaining six feet for teachers. And I think that's what we all ideally want, is for all of our teachers to be fully vaccinated that two weeks out before returning to, to in-person school. But that's not what the guidelines state. So the guidelines aren't our barrier. It's the, it's our, it's how our district is interpreting as practical as possible, right, that, that phrase. So I think we don't need the guidelines to change for that to be a change for our district. We have to decide, you know, the district has to decide what they want to do and how they want to move forward, because that's not a requirement.
Right.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that? When the guidelines say in-person instruction, does that explicitly mean full-day in-person instruction?
No.
Okay, so.
No.
I just wanted to make that clarifying point because I think that's very confusing that we're doing in-person instruction. We're already doing what the guidelines have given us, the leeway and the approval basically to do. So I guess in the guidelines, you know, does it, does it stipulate in-person full-day? And is there a variation of, of the guidelines for that? I mean, I know you talked about lunch, but beyond lunch, which is the biggest thing that changes with full-day.
Right.
Right?
Right, it, it doesn't stipulate, you know, full-day versus in-person, you know? But, and, and to your point Dana, you're absolutely right. I mean, all along, we've received guidelines, you know, this entire thing. And I was thinking about this today. It was a year ago today that we had our first remote learning day and all of our teachers came in to put together what remote learning was going to look like. And they, they did an amazing job pulling it together. On the 17th, we started with remote learning. And at that time, I was thinking, boy, if I could fast-forward to a year from now when we're not dealing with any of this, and here we are, right? And now we're, we're trying to create plans for another transition. So all along, we've had guidelines. And there have been districts that have not, have interpreted as these are guidelines, these are not mandates, and so they've done things their own way, you know? We have consistently followed the guidelines and use those as, as what they are, the guidance for us to make good decisions. Again, I, I understand that we, you know, it's not a requirement that everybody is fully vaccinated. It does impact though what happens in the buildings and possibly what happens in terms of having to quarantine staff and in terms of subbing. And right now, I can tell you, outside subs, you know, people who typically we count on for subbing in our buildings, they don't want to sub during COVID, you know? So we are pulling our special teachers, we are pulling teachers during their prep periods to fill in for those things. We're able to do that because of the current schedule that we're running. So as we expand the day, some of that flexibility is gone. And so, you know, it's again, it's, it's, we want to have a model that is consistent for our students and our staff. And so for us possibly to flip the switch earlier before people are fully vaccinated and run into a situation where people have to quarantine and then that building has to flip to remote, I don't know necessarily if that's the best thing for, for everyone as well. I think if, you know, if we wait till we're fully vaccinated, I think the probability of for us to finish the year, you know, full day, the remainder of the year, I think that's a lot higher than if possibly we, we, you know, try to press it and do it earlier.
So teachers that are quarantining can still lead Zoom instructions, assuming they're not ill, right?
Correct.
Assuming they're asymptomatic and feeling good, that sort of thing. So we're doing, we'll be doing some of that at different points throughout the buildings from what I've heard, if there's overflow or there's what, you know? So, I mean.
It's, it's just that the difference is, you know, if you have an overflow, the teacher's still in that classroom and then some students have to go to the comments of the auditorium, put their headphones in, and one person can supervise that, that group of students. If you have a classroom full of students, again, that room has to be supervised and you have to have the bodies to supervise those, those classrooms.
So you mentioned staffing.
I have another question, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Adina, was that you? I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, Jess.
Okay, I, I was just wondering, Kevin, if you've seen any increase in subs that are willing to come in? I know that, that we have and I just feel like in general, that 65-plus range is where a lot of our subs are and a lot of them are being vaccinated now. So have you heard from any of them or have you noticed an increase in availability?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't.
Okay, and then I guess, you know, I just want to, I kind of share where, where Joel and Dana are, the same opinion. I mean, I also just want to say, I am sitting at home and really sad I'm not there because I'm completely blown away by everything that was presented tonight. It is amazing. Amazing doesn't even really suffice, I feel like, for the amount of work that's been put in in such a really short period of time. And the amount of detail that these administrators are paying attention to. And I just hope everybody recognizes how much time and effort and mental energy is being put into that. It is, it cannot go unnoticed. I, I just, I'm so proud and I feel like we're ready to move to full days, I really do. And I think the sooner the better, that first vaccine has been proven to be about 75% effective. That's what the data are revealing. And so I just am really confident, I have so much faith in the administrators and the teachers to be able to do this very safely. So that's where I'm at right now. But I, you know, there are a lot of what-ifs, there always are, but I think if we can keep on waiting for all of the hypothetical situations, we just putting ourselves a little bit behind schedule when we don't need to.
Thanks Jess. Leah, did you have a question?
Yeah, so kind of on the staffing, on the staffing line as well, it sounds like there's additional staff needed at every building in some form or another, whether that be custodial, assistants, TAs, volunteers, et cetera. Is, is any of that a hard barrier, right? If we can't, if we can't get, I think, the junior high mentioned, the night custodian to flip to the day, is that, is that a no-go? Does that make full days a no-go?
It does necessarily make it a no-go, but when you're changing somebody's shift, you know, we have bargaining groups that we work with, so we'll, we'll work through that. I'm, I'm not saying that's insurmountable. The other thing that we're looking into is a temp service for custodians that we could possibly get some additional custodial help. So, so there are avenues, you know, that we can, can explore and get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you want to, Kim has a bus update.
Sorry, things come in at the 11th hour, you know, after they've left for the board meeting, but I did have an opportunity to talk to Westway this evening before the board meeting and like District 201, other districts are looking at moving to a full day and, you know, lengthening their school day. And obviously, we're looking at the possibility of more students wanting to attend in-person. And with that, we're, we have several buses that are already at our capacity limits. We have a contract for 11 AM routes and 12 PM routes. We're already utilizing the bus that we would normally use for our early childhood program because those parents are transporting students themselves to accommodate the current routes that we're doing. So we do have some buses that are not at capacity, but as we look at things, we need back all of the surveys ASAP for all of our students to know who wants to now move to in-person for the full day. And then that's going to take some time for Westway to go through and see if we can kind of shift people around and things like that. Let's say we have one school that needs four buses. Well, depending upon the changes, can that school only have three buses and we move a bus to another school that needs it? Westway does not have additional buses, so that's an investment in capital for them. And then obviously, with them not having everybody going to school all the days, the staffing is an issue. So they should know by, on Monday, if they have additional capacity for, for buses. And so that may be- And so that may be, you know, an obstacle that we need to try and figure out if there's another avenue. But again, typically you would have to go out and bid a transportation contract. That's not feasible given the timeframe. So I just want everyone to be aware that there may be some, there may be some limitations of who can come back or what we have to do, or we're going to have to have parents be willing to transport their students to school. And so as soon as we have those surveys and I can get that to the bus company, it takes them a few days to get that turned around. So we can't necessarily, you know, pivot on a dime for in-person learning.
Thanks Kevin.
Okay, thanks.
Gary or Adina, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Um, I wanted to piggyback on what Jess was saying that with this, you know, I do agree with her. I want to applaud the administrators with the superintendent that from a year ago, you know, a lot, I, I think we do get a lot of complaints of why don't we go, you know, this way or that way? But we've pivoted a lot and but comes to the table, a lot of ideas. We need innovation and that's what we've gotten from our administrators, teachers and responding to that. So we went from fully remote to hybrid and remote and now considering full day. So I do like hearing all of this and all the ideas and that being brought forth. I, my question is just on, along the lines of the consistency, you know, we spoke of. I know that's a big thing I deal with. Personally with my family, it's just that, you know, getting to a point that, you know, we've kind of gotten to our stride and we have this. And then, you know, it was, you know, kind of not devastating, but it was a setback to have to go back to remote and then go back again. And the change was more of a problem than, you know, having that goal of being in school. So I look forward to having something consistent when I'm dealing with it. And so one thing about the testing, you know, you guys all touched on that we're going, getting into that period where, you know, each, I guess each building will have a testing period. How much, you know, is that going to affect another schedule? So now, you know, you have a schedule getting back to school, we have to do a testing period. And then that changes again at the end of April to a different schedule. So how, um, you know, what would you add to that, I guess with a parent, you know, with schedule changing multiple times? And then even having quarantine times if you have to have that thrown into the mix also.
Well, that, that's one of the reasons also using that, those couple of weeks in April to move a lot of our testing into that window. So we don't have to disrupt, once we lock in on that all day schedule, we don't have to disrupt that schedule. So that's, that's one of those. And then obviously it, you know, from there, it's, it's like, you know, how we currently are, as I mentioned. You know, we're, uh, we're hoping that the high school can, can keep going, you know, during this quarantine period. But again, if, depending upon if you have to quarantine staff, um, that will, that determines if, if you have to go remote. Um, and again, I like our chances of staying in a, a schedule later when we're fully vaccinated versus if we started earlier.
So with the elementaries, I should know this, going through this, but the, the testing period, is it a week, a week's time? Is it truly two weeks? Do you need two weeks for that amount of time?
So now it's mostly Mannings. It's for IAR and ISA. So we typically have done it in a week, but use the morning and the afternoon for one session. So we'd be looking at two weeks if in hybrid. Um, yeah.
I, I actually don't have any questions for the administration or for Kevin or anybody, but I do have one for this board. And it goes back to what we've been listening to several parents say, parents want us to make a decision. They want us to make a decision and they want to move forward from that decision. And they don't want to know that next week the decision is going to change again. Uh, I think the testing periods that have been brought forth tonight are extremely important. Uh, my opinion would be to not make any more changes until April 26th. Uh, and then see if by chance we can go back to a full-time schedule at that time. But I think changing the schedule again now, after we just changed it again, I don't think that's a good plan. I really don't. I know I want to be back in school too, just like everybody else. But all, all I'm seeing is, is way too much money to be spent, a lot of volunteerism that's going to need to be done, a problem with subs. I just, I think it would be best if we gave the direction to the, to Kevin and the, and the staff and the community that this is what we're going to do. And maybe on April 26th, we can think about opening up. For the next month, six weeks, this is the plan. That's just my opinion. But I definitely think we need to give some solid direction here tonight.
Yeah. I, I agree Gary, that was going to be my comment as well. And I definitely think we need to give solid direction. I myself am not, um, I guess when I look at the cost benefit or risk reward, I, I, I don't see it. I, I think the reward or benefit is not high enough for the cost or risk. And we haven't fully talked about the cost, but I can hear it in the comments. And there's a lot of intangibles to that cost, burnout. You know, the changes, the consistency for students, it's not just about COVID risk. That's my personal opinion, if there's a board here. So I, I would recommend we take a straw poll. And I guess, I actually was thinking maybe we take a straw poll on, in three areas. One, are we all on the same page that we want full day of school come this fall? And we can straw poll that and just give parents that comfort that we're for sure setting a certain direction for the fall of next year. And then two, a straw poll on return to full day on April 26th. And then we can do a third one if everybody wants a straw poll on return to school full day prior to April 26th. So that, is that okay with?
So the first option is the full day, we will remain hybrid for the rest of the year?
Uh, no. Actually, what I was saying was, was instead of saying we'll were to remain hybrid, just saying with certainty, we're going to return, you know, we are saying we want to make sure we're back full-time by the fall, not really commenting on what happens. So those aren't options that are one or the other.
Okay.
They are independent options for us to straw poll, but that was a great clarifying question. So like, are we all in agreement that we want to make sure kids are back full day by the fall? Can we straw poll on that?
Sure.
Sure. So before we do.
Yeah.
Question slash clarification on straw poll versus action item. We cannot add this as an action item tonight because, because our agenda has been posted and as an open meeting, we cannot add agenda items within the meeting.
That's correct, Rachel.
Really, it's more just giving Kevin direction.
It's on here already as, as, well somewhat kind of on here as planning for next year. But I think we can give direction without doing a vote. Okay? So straw poll will give direction. So.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Are you guys okay with that if we do it that way? Okay. So. Direction, do we want to make sure the students are back full-time by the fall? Do we just want to go around?
Yes.
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 Yes, of course.
Okay. Jess?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Who is in, uh, straw poll on returning full days by April 26th?
You mean before or after?
On April 26th.
On April 26th, sorry. Returning to full day, April 26th. Whoever wants to start.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes, but I'm also yes on the next question too.
Right, we're going to get there.
I don't know. Can I ask a, can I ask a question to Kevin?
Sure.
Is four weeks worth it?
To be in-person?
Yeah. That's, that's my struggle because like, like Joel and Jess and Dana, I want them to get as much time, full time in-person as possible. But like Adina, schedule swaps are very disruptive to their ability to learn in general. Even when that schedule swap is to have more time in school. And that's where I, where I struggle with it. I feel like if we can't do it for more than four weeks, I don't know if it's worth it. So is it worth it?
The last four of me on the 23rd, you know, the admin team, we all presented. At that time, we felt very strongly that we could add some additional contact time, but not go full days. And a lot of that was driven by, again, the guidelines we're operating under. And on March 9th, when the new guidelines came out, as an admin team, we took a look at those. And, and we understand we, we, we serve a community and we know that some of our committee would like to see their students in full-time. And I, and I think for them, it wouldn't matter if it was one week or if it was four weeks. Uh, I think just having their child have that opportunity. And so I, I think there is a benefit, even if it's for four weeks, to having kids in full day. If anything, um, you know, it's, it's already going to, next year is already going to be a transition, right? Because of, you know, students have now been a year of either a hybrid or remote schedule. And so for some of our students, our younger students, getting them back into that routine even, you know, and, and getting them into, you know, what school is, uh, I think there's a benefit to that.
Thanks Kevin. Does that change anybody's vote so far?
Nope.
Okay. Leah?
Uh, yes.
Am I yes?
Jess?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then the next straw poll is return to full days after spring break.
No.
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 Uh, yeah, I would say yes, but I'm, I'm, I absolutely want to be reasonable about it. I'm not saying you must do it, you know, it must happen. But I'm, I'm more open to, please explore and keep in mind the possibility that we could bump it up a week or two weeks or something, depending on what happens. So in the planning, if we set this date, you know, it, there still may be the possibility to get additional weeks. And that's where I stand.
I'm the same as Joel. If we can, 26th is the absolute latest, but if we can make it even a week earlier. Yeah.
And I'm the same. I just think it's a tremendous amount of work for, that the admin has already had to do for four weeks. So I think if there's any way we can stretch it to after spring break, I think it'd be fantastic, but flexible.
Um, and I, I agree with Dana and Leah and Joel on that. I'm a yes for after spring break if that's possible. And you know, as is done all along, if Tim's ready at Miller to do it right after spring break, let's let him do that. And if the other school needs one more week, let them have that one more week. But push for as soon as possible.
Can I ask the follow-up question?
Yeah.
Is that possible? With the school?
I always like to see, anything's possible. But, um, you know, there's, there's always a lot of moving parts. And, um, so, I mean, we, we have our staff to think about. And there's always the question of equity comes up and what does equity look like? And so there'd be a lot of conversations that would have to take place before I'd be able to commit to, yes, this building can come online before the other buildings.
I mean, I'm going to say I'm kind of, um, I think we just asked ourselves to give clear direction and we didn't really give clear direction, in my opinion. But that's, um, I guess, uh, you know, the direction, I'm going to try to summarize it is, April 26th is the absolute, you know, we want to be back in school full day. We're open to hearing, and, and correct me if I'm not using the right words, but we're open to hearing solutions that get us in full day in advance of April 26th.
I think I'll do a correction to that. I think that the majority of the board voted for, if it's possible, that we don't necessarily need to hear. That if that's.
Just do it.
Just do it. If that's the plan that is feasible and reasonable, that that's what the district should do. And if they feel that it's not reasonable, they won't.
That's, that was my takeaway.
Kevin, is that, is that clear for you?
Yeah, that's clear. I mean, we're, we're just, like I, I said, March 9th, these new guidelines came out. The admin team, we started having conversations Thursday, Friday. The admin continued. I know these guys were working on it over the weekend, they were working on Monday. If you're following board docs, there were attachments happening, probably three minutes before this meeting started, there was an attachment. And so, do you have something?
I just have a question. Because tomorrow, we're, administrators going to poll all of our parents and community members and ask them about returning to in-person. And on the form, why aren't we telling them that they're coming back? Cause I think it makes a difference for our families. I must, I do in their decision. And I also think that some of our families will take into consideration that this is regardless of testing after spring break, which is when people might be traveling, et cetera. And I want to be able to get the best data so that I can create the best situation for our students and staff returning to the building. The safest one at that. So I'm just asking, when I'm sending this out to our families tomorrow, what am I asking them to reply to?
I think that's a really great question from Megan. And I think it helps us understand how challenging this situation is. So Kevin, what, um, do you have any guidance for the board as it relates to a challenge like that?
Well, again, without consulting, I mean, you can always, you know, the, the, the more questions you ask, sometimes it dilutes the, the answers, you know, so to speak. But I mean, definitely what I'm hearing from the board is April 26th. So the question can be asked, if, um, full day starts April 26th, would you opt for remote or in-person? And there isn't going to be a hybrid option, like you can stay with the same schedule they currently have. It's two options. Your child is either full day or the remote. There could be a qualifying question, if the district were to start a full day a week, two weeks earlier, does, does that change your response? Or now are you more likely to? I mean, that's the only way.
Would you do that?
I think, I think we need to clarify as a board, if we're talking about April 2nd or April 26th. Because I think that that, I think we need to make a decision and own our decision, whether it's wrong or right. So I think we should do another straw poll and say, are we doing it April 2nd? Or I'm sorry if I'm wrong in the date.
April 3rd, 4th. I think it's April 5th, it's the day after spring break.
I, yeah, I, I think. The sixth, I'm going to tell you, will be very, very difficult. And some of it has to do with like Manning for instance, again, they have asbestos work happening over spring break.
Yep.
We got to get the bus information done, you know, so to say that, you know, it's April 6th or it's April 23rd, I think is, or 26th, I can't.
The 12th. So the 19th.
26th is the Monday, so 26th.
Okay. So I'm sorry, I'm just hearing this conversation. Megan just said that the 19th is the soonest for the high school.
For the high school, yeah.
And we don't know if we can have some schools start sooner than other schools for various reasons. So, I mean, I think for sure the direction is April 26th. And then, I mean, maybe it's just a question like, are you willing to send your kids back on April 26th? And then, uh, if the date changes, are you still in?
I don't think it's fair to do that. I think we need to make a decision as a board. If we, if there's enough agreement for, is an extra week worth it or is it not? Now that we have additional information that it's only a week extra.
I'm sorry, go ahead Dana.
I just think asking parents and staff to change again is too much.
I agree. Thank you. So do we want to do a straw poll on April 19th?
Well, I, I would just like to make one more statement here. And again, I want to remind everybody what we heard from the high school tonight, how important the month of April is and how many different testing periods they have and different, uh, different state tests that they have to take. Do we really want to change this kid's schedule in the middle of all that testing? Okay? That's why April 26th, in my opinion, is the first time to go back because then the high school can have a chance for, for, for normalcy or, or, or regular April as best they can without any. Without it in the middle of this, we suddenly go to a full day program.
Is there testing that week? Is that true?
Of April 19th?
Yeah. Is that after the testing? Is that week?
That's what, I mean, we've heard it all night long. We've heard, I mean, we've been at it two hours tonight. We've been at it several hours, over a course of several meetings. The month of April is extremely important to the high school students. I think we need to make a decision for them. I think we need to make a decision for the parents and not, not, I'm sorry to use bad terms, but not be wishy-washy about it. It's either April 26th or next year. I mean, I know, I would, I want the kids in school yesterday. I know we all do, okay? But the guidelines aren't gonna change tomorrow afternoon. I mean, they will, but we don't know what they're gonna be. Okay? So I know, I'm very passionate about it and I've heard it from Jack and from Kevin and just from the years of sitting here. The month of April is extremely important to the students in the high school. The junior high, the juniors do some testing too during, during April, right? Yeah, so it's not, I mean, this is, this is the month. So I can't see making another change in the middle of the month on the students, particularly the high school students. All students will take it hard, but that's extremely hard to go from this schedule to that schedule and going to a test today. That's just my opinion.
But that's when I'm not, I'm not hearing that though. I'm not hearing that that's the case for that week. I don't know if I'm wrong.
The science exam, it's just, the science exam is that week.
And I think they have a program already built with their, the schedule that they have already. They already have a plan that's in place with ramping up, studying, quizzing, that's in place. They know what it is. And it's preparing them, you know, for the test after that. And so I think that's important, I think that's important, in a lesser extent for elementary. Oh, Jess?
Jess had a comment.
Yeah, I have a question just about, I guess, I hear everybody about the testing. And I get that, but I'm struggling to see how students being in the building longer is gonna somehow inhibit their ability to do well on tests. I think maybe I'm not understanding fully what's happening during those testing weeks. Like, are they not normal school days for most of the students? Are they would be for most of the students with the exception of those doing AP testing, which I know that AP testing is also, looks a lot different this year, depending on if they're doing it on paper or remotely. But I guess maybe I could just use a little bit more clarification on when exactly these testing periods are and how they look different from a previous year and which groups of students they impact. And also how being in school for a full day would somehow prevent them from being prepared or doing well on those tests.
Okay, so I'm, this is Megan Birving from the high school. So testing is, is going to look different this year. And we have, has to look different because of the way in which the guidelines have to be to keep students safe in a testing situation, numbers to proctors. So we cannot feasibly, because of our size, have school going on while we're SAT testing the juniors. So on the day that we SAT test, all the other students will have to be remote and most likely asynchronous because of the fact that those teachers have to be proctors for the smaller groups that we have to have for SAT. The next day are for students with accommodations, students that get extended time, students with IEPs, students with 504s. So that day, there won't be students in the building, available to be in the building because we need the proctors again and the teachers and the students for that purpose. The following days are for the PSAT and the PSAT 8-9. Again, because having to test smaller groups, the 11th and 12th graders will have to be out of the building those days. And potentially, they would be asynchronous because the teachers would have to be proctoring, proctoring the exam for all the students that we have. There's an Illinois Science Assessment, which would fall under the following week. It could potentially be two days, depending on students with accommodations. And then we have AP testing that lasts potentially for two weeks. Do I think kids being in the school building a longer day will affect their ability to test? Only to the extent that I, we can't feasibly supervise the students, teach the students, and test the students because we don't have the physical capacity to do it. We don't have the staff, we don't have the space. And it doesn't matter how we go about doing it. This year, it just looks different. In the past.
Megan, that's, Megan, that's so helpful. Thank you so much. So that helps me a lot, understand it. So I guess my next question is, and that's gonna happen though. Testing is gonna look kind of funky that way, regardless of if they're in for a half day or a full day, unfortunately, just because of spacing and proctoring and all of that. So that's kind of separate. I, can you please remind me what two weeks we're looking at that that testing is taking place?
So the first, like the first bit of testing that would cause like significant schedule changes would be the week of April 12th. The 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th, those days. We've already, as a high school team, sent out communication to our families about what those days will look like and about what the expectations are for students and families. So it's already something we've been planning for, no matter if we were full, partial day, hybrid, remote. It's already been planned for separately.
What about the week, what about the week of the 19th?
That was, that's when we're planning for the Illinois Science Assessment. And it's this year, well, we took it last year and they had changed it to juniors only. It wasn't, because of the pandemic, it never followed through on. We're having it again this year and I guess it's juniors only again. So it'll be just two days potentially, students that are taking it out are juniors and then students with accommodations. And currently, starting this week, we have access testing going on, which will last until spring break for us. And we're utilizing the afternoons after instructional time so those students that are most in need of instructional time aren't missing it.
Okay, this is my last question, I promise.
Yes, of course.
So do, does the whole student body take the science test during the week of the 19th? Or would student, like, I guess, would students have to be learning asynchronous at home? Or could they, could students, could regular instruction be going on while that test is taking place?
Regular instruction definitely would not be able to occur during the college board suite of assessments. It's just not feasible because of the number of proctors that we would need to make it happen. The Illinois Science Assessment, it would be less. It would be, there would be more possibility for teachers to be able to teach synchronously, remotely to the students that are not in the building because not as many proctors are needed to support that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Some sincerity. So just to the, to the board, as we're deciding on the date, we wanna direct everybody to go full day. I think the earliest we can do is the 19th. So do we want to do a straw poll on that one then?
Do we want a straw poll on the 19th, everybody? Okay. So straw poll of board members for return to full day on April 19th.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, so I think April 26th is our date. So, thank you fellow board members. Thank you to the admin team for all of your work and all of the staff for all of your work. And can we move on to the next agenda?
Yes.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is elementary planning for the 2021, 2022 school year.
All right, we are gonna try to move really efficiently. We have four amazing staff members that are representing Manning and Miller joining us who have sat through the first two hours. Roth will always give accurate numbers there. So we have Mary Roth, who's been at both Manning and now Miller as a kindergarten teacher. And this is her final year, so let's all. Only you to go out in a way like this. All right, Mary Powell is a kindergarten teacher at Miller and new to us this year. At this point, they all deserve a round of applause.
Absolutely.
Because they're teaching these little ones in the morning. Kristi Parcettage is a fourth grade teacher at Manning. And Tracy Billy is an amazing instructional coach for all of our elementary teachers in both buildings. So part of what the board had asked us when we gave an update from before was to give a teacher update. Here they are. So we'll try to get through our presentation really quickly and we really ask that you gain their perspective as they're speaking on behalf of their colleagues and then, of course, their personal experiences. So, really quickly, the why, and it's a little bit off here. Let's try it one more time. If not, we're gonna go in this mode. Okay, we're just gonna go, we'll click one by one if that's okay, just for time purposes. Oh no, it's all off the screen.
Yeah, it looked like your, it looks like your text box just got moved over somehow.
Oh, the text box. All right, let's try one more time. Okay, so I think the last two hours has really created the why of what we want to do moving forward. We took on the challenge as an elementary team that includes all stakeholders who participated in really a three-month push of thinking about how we want to move forward in the pandemic and post-pandemic. So our plan, which we really received great feedback, not just from the board, but then we had four parent live sessions to talk through and ask questions and really think deeper. We want to have a plan that's very consistent going into next school year. A short-term plan that provides stability and hopefully a calm for our staff, for our students, and for our families, while still really focusing on giving them the best experience possible, which I know that we can do, given the time to coordinate that. Our second piece, which is really where we are looking for some long-term planning, is to think about not too far out, but making the decisions of long-term. We've long been having discussions about potential shifts and barriers and obstacles. We would like to really see ourselves five to seven years from now with a plan where we're meeting those marks and making those gains as an elementary team. That benefits us all and we celebrate those successes.
Good evening. So just a reminder of what our process for the elementary has been. You can see a couple of things that we presented last time, but one of the things that we've been able to do is continue to ask for responses from the survey that we first provided. During parent-teacher conferences, we had a couple more families fill that out. We also have that survey in Spanish as well, where we're collecting also data from other languages. And so this is where we're at. We are, want to make sure that, like Ms. Petersak said, that we are now planning for long-term changes and figuring out what that task force looks like and what they will have to do to continue this process.
So, I'm Tim Wiler, Principal at Miller again. We, we did a very brief survey to the teachers as we were trying to gather just some very quick input. And I believe their lens is, we're in a pandemic. How do we get class sizes to a point where they're manageable, following all the social distance? I think if we ask this question again in a year or even two years after we're maybe more in a traditional school year, it might be different. But we did, we did ask the question, which method do you prefer in a K5 learning model? And we had 80% of our staff in the buildings, both teachers and support staff, advised that a K1 setting and a 2-5 setting would be more desirable at this moment in time. And then about 18 to 19, or 20%, 20% enjoy the K5 model, is, which is the building model that we came from. The more important pieces of those surveys, just like the parent surveys, was the why and the open-ended questions that we asked. And so we really tried to dive in with our billing leadership teams on what makes grade level centers function and thrive and what are the good points of it? And we kind of shared this slide before, but overall focus on grade level curriculum, age-based peers, access to expertise at different levels, catering to the different learning platforms, as you know. If you have a child at Miller, we're using CSO as one of our communication tools. If you have a child over at Manning, you're using Otis. And so just the different learning platforms kind of lends itself to the, to the age of the students. In a K5 model, some of the benefits would be having peers as role models, older or mixed grade level activities, so activities that would cater to all five-year-olds, all the way up to fifth grade. Collaboration between the sixth grade levels and having the experience of the staff to remain together throughout a six-year period. The biggest win is that when we surveyed the staff as well as surveying the community, our three top values have not, did not change. We had about another 25 parents that filled out our survey from the last board meeting. So we got, we got another 25 surveys completed. Strong curriculum was at the very top and instruction of what we value. High-quality teachers was right there and opportunities for enrichment intervention. So those did not change even after we tried reaching out, getting a bigger community perspective on what our top priorities are. And the best part of it is that our teachers, our staff, our parent community, the administration, we have common goals to share, a vision that goes beyond this year. It goes into next year as, as what we're talking about today on what next year could look like in a more full-day in-person model. And then what kind of process we want to follow to get us to more long-term goals. So priorities with all the stakeholders involved and then having a student-centered approach to teaching and learning.
So this brings us to truly focusing our attention on a long-term plan. We want to make sure that we have an elementary task force to help with this. We definitely want to, especially from, from the recommendation of the board, get more community data and different perspectives. And also, think about this in a financial way. And there is that to do. And thinking about what other members need to be involved in this task force to help us plan long-term. You know, we, there's different committees that need to be involved, such as the Facility and Finance Committee. We definitely want to include our parent organization groups, our community members, our teachers and our faculty, our administrators. We have our PTO board, our BPEC board, our school board. So all of those important stakeholders that can help be part of this task force and help us to see what we can do as a long-term plan for our buildings.
So our goals have not changed, whether they're short-term or long-term. We want to be able to evaluate our programs, know what is working and what is not, create a shared vision and have it tied to our strategic plan, which we are in the process of doing over the next few weeks. Making sure our short-term and long-term goals are measurable and we hold ourselves accountable for those pieces. And then we celebrate the success, which is something that 201, we, we take pride, a lot of pride in those pieces. Whoops.
So our final recommendation for the 20, for next school year would be grade level centers. We think the benefits of this model and knowing we're about to now take on another change before the end of the school year, potentially making another change before the start of the school year, knowing the guidelines will be in place, is something we really want to think about. Our space in the buildings accommodate for a full day to start. We have three class sizes, or sorry, three, yes, three class sizes of grade level cohort that are very large. At Miller, it is currently a second grade class size, so the entire grade level, and also fourth grade at Miller specific. At Manning, it is a current third grade. So when we're looking at maximizing small class sizes overall, we have three grade cohorts that have that. We haven't been able to look at the kindergarten data because that is open enrollment now that carries through the summer. And we know we always get some last minute that come in. So we'd be able to really think about continuing at our youngest levels, those small class sizes as much as possible. It allows us to have collaboration opportunities that are maximized. I'm sure teachers can attest to, whether it's a minute, five minutes, or an hour. Every second counts in being able to make sure that all of our students have access to similar experiences that are absolutely amazing, which I have no doubt that they do. And then the scheduling really offers us targeted focus, targeted focuses based on age appropriateness, based on whole-level cohort. He's focusing on two, I'm focusing on four at this current model. We have a dual coordinator and an EB coordinator. So rather than doing all of those things in each of the buildings, we are targeting our focus with our teacher teams to do that. Offers more opportunities for intervention and enrichment, which is something we have not talked about in a while through COVID, and that still does exist. And there's still lots of opportunities that we'd like to bring back the fun in elementary and thinking about that, once again, that's age appropriate for that time. So, I'm gonna bring the teachers up if they're okay with it. And if there are any questions either that we can answer or they can answer for you, we would love to clarify for you.
Okay, so, hi, Mary Roth, kindergarten at Miller and at Manning for the last 18 years. And I am retiring at the end of this year.
I'm Mary Powell. I'm the first year in the district and I'm in kindergarten.
And she's fabulous. So our kindergarten team works really, really well together. And we have a new, a new teammate here. So, we prepared some words here that we'd like to share with you regarding grade level centers. Kevin can attest that when we meet in PLCs for the past, I don't know, four or five years, our kindergarten team has mentioned that we would be better off having a grade level center, especially for the little ones. We have so much information that we need to share with our little ones. What Miller having, Manning having three full-time kindergarten teachers, Miller having one mono and one dual language. We are all together now and it is fabulous. So, we're going to mention a few things here. Teacher collaboration, shared curriculum and resources, common daily lesson plans. Thanks to Mary and Laura Hedberg. Dual language, we have a dual, access to a dual-language teacher. We didn't have that over at Manning, which is really nice to have when we're at grade level centers. And then, of course, even distribution of students. So, let's say that this was a typical year, we would have 93 kindergarten students, five teachers to divide them by, that'd be 18 students per class. There were times, and we've come to board meetings, where there've been 12 students over at kindergarten at Mann, at Miller and we've had 22 or 23 at Manning. There are times where we've had 18 or 16, one year I had 16 students in kindergarten and I think Miller ended up having 23, 24. So, it provides for just equity as far as students go and services that we can provide to them, both enrichment, as Lindsay has talked about, and, and kids that perhaps need extra services, special ed or, you know, reading services or whatever they may need. So, Mary.
For me personally, I find it super helpful to be in with all the kindergarten teachers, especially being new to the district and I thought that would be a really good point to share as well. Coming in, I didn't know the curriculum. I needed a little bit of extra, like, hey, can I pull you for five seconds so I can just ask you this question? And my team doesn't let me down ever. And it would have been a harder thing to go, oh, now I have to go down the hall, around the corner, go find the one kindergarten teacher that's there when I have dual language across the hallway, Mrs. Roth right next door, I have Laura down the hallway, we're all together and we're all able to be like, can you just jump on Zoom for five minutes, I need to talk to you? Or like, this thing came up in a parent last night and I don't know how to respond to it, can we just all jump on a meeting? It's so easy to be able to collaborate and when we're all in the same building and sharing the resources. Like, Mary Roth's got everything, right, everything. And I have a few things, but I don't have everything. So, we have the copy room set up in a space that we can just throw things onto the counter, label it all in sections and be like, if you need an extra resource here, if you need an extra resource here. Not only is that helpful for me as a kindergarten teacher, but because, you know, right now we have our librarian and our music teacher. Shout out to them because they are amazing right now. Being able to be that kindergarten teacher right now for us, it's easy for them to pull something that they can have and they can need. Also, I just kind of want to bring up dual language one more time. I love the fact that my kids who are in a mono-language classroom can go across the hall and know those kids in dual language and they're literally outside as we pass them, they're like, oh, how are you doing? And it's like, they didn't have that experience at Manning if you didn't have the dual language as young as that. And I think just bringing that culture together and realizing we're all the same in that kindergarten whole group setting is just awesome.
Hi, I'm Kristy Praseditz, I teach fourth grade at Manning. I didn't come up prepared notes like the kindergarten teacher. I'm really tired. I'll just say that the biggest difference for me in fourth grade is we're departmentalized. So, you know, I've taught math for a few years and I was the only fourth-grade math teacher in my building. So, it's just so nice now that I can have someone to plan with. So, I kind of have a partner now, whereas before I only met with that person once or twice a month. Now, I literally just walk down the hall, hey, you know, when we, we make shared lessons together, we have common assessments together, which we tried to do before, but now it's just way easier to implement. So, that's the biggest difference. I think it's been hard in COVID to do things that we would really like to do with the dual. But, you know, unfortunately, we can't just march down to the room and, and kind of interact with them in a way that I think we could possibly in the future, that would be good. I do know my kids are now saying the pledge in Spanish. So, that's something they never had before. But the biggest thing for me is definitely the collaboration and having that on a daily basis, sharing data of our students and just a true professional learning community that, that we can share that data and have common assessments.
Hello, I'm Tracy Billy, I'm the instructional coach over at Miller and at Manning. So, I get to see both schools and how they're working. The collaboration that I have seen this year at all grade levels has been tremendous. It has been what I have been asking for and I'm loving that they all get to have these times to collaborate together. What has already been touched on is the collaboration doesn't happen just during a PLC time. The collaboration is constant throughout a day. It is in the morning when you're passing, it is at lunch breaks, it is after school. It's in a quick little mask break, okay, how did that lesson work? What should I do differently in my next lesson? It's constant. We have gotten to see the benefits of the collaboration and everything and the sharing of the resources this year in a year that has been very unusual, one that we have never experienced before. So, we can't even tell you how many great other wonderful benefits we would see in grade level centers in a year that we are not having to deal with so many restrictions and a year that maybe we are not having to deal with COVID circumstances. So, I think the possibilities, we've already talked about some of those as the grade level teams, the possibilities that are out there for the great benefits of grade level centers, even when there are, the restrictions start to be released a little bit, I think that we would even see even greater benefits in grade level centers. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment and maybe there's a question in there somewhere. So, again, thank you for your enthusiasm at 9:20 after sitting here for two hours. Really appreciate that. And I, I, I just want to ask you, and maybe Tracy, you can do this for the group or whoever's comfortable doing it for the group. Can, can we just reframe some of the benefits you mentioned from a student perspective? So, what does collaboration on curriculum? What does sharing of resources? What does even distribution of students, what does that do for the student learning? What benefits does that translate to for student learning?
I want to even touch a little bit just even on the kindergarten team for collaboration of resources. Some of the play-based resources that they like to use and everything, we don't have those in all of the classrooms. So, them being able to kind of use those, of course, right now it's a little limited. You know, you got to spray it down, wait 72 hours or whatever. But in the non-COVID year or whatever, those, collaboration of those kind of resources, we can share amongst each other. Same with actually in the two-through-five buildings. We may not have all the math manipulatives right now for every single student, so we can share those manipulatives upon the grade level. For students, I think the, the dual-language piece is one of the biggest pieces, you know? We can kind of start to have our monolinguals meet with our dual languages students a little bit more. That's one of those things that we're talking about, being a little bit more creative about in the future when we don't have so many of these restrictions. And that's something that we are all very excited about.
Curriculum-wise, I think I come from a different lens, having taught middle school and high school where I was always on a team and I came to elementary school and I'm like, oh my goodness, I'm all by myself. And it was so hard. So, the kids benefit when I benefit with curriculum, right? So, if I have that opportunity to say to my partner, hey, how'd your kids do on this test? Mine did, you know, so, so, so I know if it's my teaching, is it my instruction? Can I take something from my partner to make my instruction better? So, I know that's a teacher's lens. But the main idea is the kids, right? What they're getting from those collaboration with curriculum is huge. Even when we just have those discussions on what the best question is to use or how to best assess the skill or sharing a project. The kids benefit so greatly from just us talking and having that opportunity to talk all the time. So, it's just, you know, a natural thing, not twice a month. I'm like, hey, I gave five assessments during this time, you know, how did they do? We just didn't have the time.
I want to also share with student, about student population. So, when you're at Miller and you only have one classroom, we have stuff to say. The Marys always. Let me just move it around here. That's what happens, you get two Marys, it's too much power. When we have one monolingual classroom, they're, they're with that kid and travel K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5 until they get to the middle school and then they get to meet a different group of friends. When you're in a grade level center, you have an assortment of kids that you can move around and change. If you have, by the same token, if you have a, you know, a kid that needs some extra help, they have, there's other teachers or resources to help them. So, just making different friends and having the opportunity to make different friends. It kind of grows with, you know, when you keep those. I agree, I like the small schools, if I was a parent, I could, I could see the benefit of that. But as far as the kids go, I think they would really benefit with, with grade levels.
And like, from a student's perspective, I mean, when you dress up like Cat in the Hat, everyone starts to talk to you. So, they talk to me all the time now in the gym when I go in there. So, when I went in there the other day, I, the kids were coming around and they got a whole bunch of papers and stuff back, right, from their teachers, the art projects they did. And when we do art projects, especially nowadays, it's the fine motor, the gross motor, all those extra things. But, you know, they're doing the art projects, they don't know all those extra little ones, right? And the kids are like, did you do the leprechaun project today? Yeah, what did your teacher do with it? Did you, did you guys sing the same song? Yeah, so it's like connecting them in a much deeper level than like, oh, cool, I got to do that one thing. It's like, oh, what was your favorite part? And now we're not only just making more friends, but we're learning how to converse and take turns with conversations and things of that too. So, something as simple as like, you know, last night I thought about, on the 100-day school, I came up with a project at like 10 o'clock at night, made it for the team and everyone did it and the kids loved it. And it was something that like I wouldn't have been able to share with everyone if we weren't just a foot away from each other in the, in the school.
I have a question for the administrators. How long has your planning been for this project? As far as the school improvement teams, serving parents, serving teachers, how long have you spent?
So, we originally started to join the strategic plan with conversations of specific concerns, which we're talking about with space and budgeting, well, before two years ago. No, but formally of having these conversations of, once COVID hit in February, kind of reviewed it in the last meeting, put a stop, planning for COVID. We reinvested in January. And so, having January through now to really think through, you know, where we would like to go and then taking a step back from the feedback and understanding, okay, let's explore these options we just kind of talked about and say, are they even really possible? Because I think a lot of parents are asking, well, why not? And so, really laying that clearly out of what is possible and then what can we do that's permanent? So, I think, you know, we've been talking about it for a long time. We thought, you know, the strategic plan would jump forward and then we had to pause on that, create COVID and rejuvenate in January of this year.
Okay, I'm going to ask you some yes or no questions. Did you involve the parents in your planning process?
Yes.
Did you involve administrators and teachers?
Yes.
Did you involve PTO?
Yes.
Did you involve school board?
Yes.
So, when you're looking at the long-term plan side and so where we're going from here, so there's a development of a district elementary task force to plan for long-term changes. So, did you present those things to parents, administrators, teachers, your, your PTO board as a long-term plan or as a short-term plan when you're having conversations about grade level centers?
I think we, we.
I think we're off-topic.
Well, we tackled the, we tackled this plan for next school year as a long-term plan. I think at the last board meeting, we kind of reshift, we shifted to more of a short-term focus just to give some solidarity to what can we, what can parents grab on to for next year to give them a little bit of hope and a little bit of like some solidarity in terms of what next year's going to look like. So, full day, in-person, and our recommendation is grade level centers for next school year. And then really diving into some of the other options, which I think Ms. Petersak did a great job at the last meeting kind of identifying. Some of the things that we talked about, maybe one school, K-5 that's rebuilt or modifying some budgeting questions to see if that's even feasible or getting even more creative with school boundaries. So, just kind of as much as we haven't dived into, dove into the, those other aspects, just.
Sure.
Maybe if grade level center is not the long-term answer, let's figure out and put everything on the table.
So, I know, Gary, you just.
Yeah, we're way off-topic here. The topic is, we're information discussion for the update on the 2020-2021 school year. So, we should not be talking about long-term plans when we're supposed to only be talking about the 2020-2021 school year. But go ahead.
So, one of the. Well, I mean, I guess I'm in defense of Dana's question. I mean, there is a portion of their presentation that was about long-term planning. So, I think it's fair to clarify. I know we don't want to spend a lot of time lingering there, but.
So, I think one confusion that happened last meeting, Gary, was that there was some, some confusion within the presentation about what we were going to be voting on this meeting. If we were going to be voting on the 2021-22 school year. And then it became clear and you had presented a concern over if we're talking a longer-term plan, which Tim had said, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, last meeting, actually, this was what we were thinking as a long-term plan. And we talked about having some, wanting to some community involvement before making that decision. So, I guess my, I think that giving some clarification for the next school year is absolutely something we should do at this meeting. In the spirit of making decisions and being decisive and using our administrators' time well, I think that we, I'm trying to assess this long-term plan. Really, last meeting, we started to have conversations about, do we need to make a short-term plan for next year and then wait a whole other year before we make a decision on a long-term plan? So, I was curious of the timing that you guys took and the aspects that you looked at to say, I think we need to put this on an agenda and make a decision on a long-term plan and just trying to assess how much time we think we're going to need for that.
Right, like without, sorry, just to build on where I think you're headed, instead of like redoing the whole process that you've already been through, how do you build on that process and quickly come back with the gaps that need to be filled in for a long-term plan so that we're not dragging this out forever? And we're, we're recognizing the feedback of the community, which is make decisions and move on.
Yes.
And I think we did a good job of those that it impacts directly. I think what we identified at the last meeting was taxpayers and those maybe that are not directly impacted by sending a child to kindergarten through fifth grade. And so, that's, I think, an area that we could improve on 100%.
And I think to kind of, you know, the plan is to do this long-term planning this summer. So, it's not something that's going to carry on to another school year. But there were some suggestions from parents that do bear consideration. And right now, we don't have the answers for them, like, okay, maybe that would work, maybe that is a solution. And some of it's going to be including Steve Cashman involved in that a little bit. But the, the plan would be to get this work done this summer so that long-term, we know what direction we want to take.
So, I was under the understanding from the last meeting that at this one, we are making a decision on 21-22 and that long-term, that we split out 21-22 and long-term planning.
Yes.
That was my understanding and I understand you're touching on it here.
Yep.
1,000% because it's got to be, hey, we're splitting it out. But that was my understanding from the last meeting.
Yep. I think we're all on the same page. It's just a matter of what's the timing for the long-term planning, which I think is appropriate for us to set a benchmark for you guys at this point in time. And if you're saying that's end of summer before the beginning of the next school year, is that, does everybody agree that that's reasonable timing?
Yes.
I mean, I don't see anybody.
It seems reasonable to me.
Okay. All right, so do we want to do a, we don't have this as a vote, but do we want to do a straw poll on are we good with this plan to go to grade level centers for the 2021-2022 school year?
I abstain.
I didn't know if this is part of just discussion or is it.
We're just strong-holding.
If you give direction, if you're comfortable with.
Yes, grade level centers for the next school year, 21-22.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I also want to say that I am affected by this this year and next year. As, as a board member, I have a kindergartner and a second grader right now. And I will have a first grader and a third grader next year with that decision being made.
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so can we follow with what we're going to? So, Kevin, should we expect something in August or the general summer timeline?
The August board meeting.
You'll, you'll get, alright, we're planning for the.
You'll get, all right, we're planning for the extended days. No, we'll give you a calendar by, definitely by May of the planning for the summer, and we'll have the dates and, you know, begin inviting various people to be a part of that, but we'll get that to you.
Okay, so by the May meeting, we'll have the, the project timeline, basically. Yep. Okay, great. The next item, as everybody good? The next item on the agenda is board meeting efficiency.
Well, Laura, I'd actually like to table this, and I'll give you a very good reason why. This seems like planning for the future board and direction for future boards, this board's only going to be together two more times, two more meetings. I, I don't see the discussion being that beneficial for this board right now, tonight. Maybe six months ago would have been beneficial, maybe two years ago would have been beneficial, but I think, you know, the ideas in there are all very well structured. I don't have any issue with, with the actual topics that are in there. I just don't see the need to continue this discussion for board meeting efficiency at this meeting tonight. I think it's really something for the new board, it's going to be seated in about six or seven weeks. All right, we have two meetings left, basically. We have March 23rd, which is a special meeting, where we're praying to God, Kevin, that there's only one topic on that meeting, okay? And then there's going to be the April, I think it's April 13th meeting, and then after that, it's going to be the reorganization meeting. So I, I can't see spending a lot of time, this board's spending a lot of time on this topic tonight.
I think you'll probably touch on this as well. I'm assuming you'll probably have a board self-avail when the new members are seated, and this is obviously a great-
So that was actually going to be, I would suggest that we put an action in place, a follow-up action in place for this, that at our next board meeting, we have scheduled our board self-evaluation when our new board members are here and have this as part of that. That was, so that we know, I was kind of thinking tonight, like, I know that we're not entirely sure what meeting they're going to be sat at, but that we either create a special meeting within the next week or two, just thinking back to how beneficial that self-evaluation was for us, that we have that on the books as soon as possible. I was going to recommend that as an action item.
Dana, you were the one who requested this agenda item, so I just wanted to give you a chance to-
Sure. That's a really interesting thought, Gary. I hadn't thought of it in that way, so I appreciate that perspective. I, I am a little hesitant that a new board, the new board members, and there's going to be quite a few, are going to, I almost want to have some good structures in place walking into the new board members coming. I don't know if the new board members are going to have a, an understanding of the other dynamics at play that, especially with Joel and Gary, I think, some of the historic issues, why we might not want to go in a certain direction, but I'm happy to do whatever the board majority wants to do, if we want to table this until the new board comes or if we want to talk about it tonight.
I think any of them can be implemented by, some of them can be implemented by the person running the meeting, right? So, and follow-up items can be unique.
So I guess my request to table is just, we're not going to do that right now, we're not going to at least talk about doing it. It seems like we're now talking about what's going on for the board meeting.
Well, all right, if you want to table it, we'd have to have a vote. I'm fine with not having a vote and just moving on, but that's-
That's all I'm saying.
We want to vote, let's vote on tabling it.
I say yes, table it.
I say yes, but I have a question, but I'll say yes.
I say no, I think we should discuss it.
I say yes, table it.
Poor Leah looks stressed every vote.
It's okay, Leah.
Because I know where half of you are, and I know where the other half of you are.
Where are you? All that matters.
It's all right, it's okay.
The, the theme of this meeting is be decisive, so.
We should start these in opposite directions. That's one for me.
That's one meeting efficiency.
I'm going to take Gary's spot in a month. I think that we should table the majority of it, but that we could have a 10-minute conversation about one or two items, specifically the follow-up. I think specifically the follow-up.
Okay, Dana, I'm, I'm all for discussing it. Jess, do you want to discuss or table?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, you know I appreciate these suggestions. I would be okay with talking about the follow-up items and attaching a meeting calendar, because I feel like those are really simple things that we can do free of fun, most likely.
All right. So we're going to discuss the two topics of, did we have a majority? Yes, follow-up, follow-up items, and what was the other one?
I didn't know that was an option, that, you know, when you're tabling something, you either table it or you don't table it. You don't kind of table it, I'm just saying, okay?
All right, so.
So we either say yay or nay to tabling it, okay? If we don't table it, we have the conversation.
We're not tabling it. All right.
I, I'm so sorry. How many, how, if we're going to discuss it, I would say just table it then for when we have our new board members.
All right, so then we're, I think that puts us back into the table it category. Done, we're tabling it.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be the tiebreaker on that, but I, I think that's probably best for tonight.
All right. Okay, parent SIP team reports.
Okay.
Leah, you put this item on the agenda, and we didn't get to discuss it last time, so we're discussing it.
Yeah, so I assume that everybody's had a chance to read the email I sent over to Joel and Kevin a couple of weeks back. So I would like to see on our regular agendas, similar to item I, which is the superintendent's report, communications, FOIA request, the legislative report and whatnot, I'd love to see before board reports, or even before the superintendent's report, a SIP team reporting item there. And I can see this potentially into the future becoming something like a SIP team and a staff team report, so that we're able to think, a learning that we've had here is that all the work that goes on in the school on, on the daily, we haven't had to be very involved in or haven't had to understand at the level that we have to understand this year. And I think part of that has shown me that if we had more information earlier, we might not have to learn so much in such a short period of time. I'm also a big proponent for people having a voice and an equal voice. I'm not talking about votes, because I think that we are the board and we do have to be decisive and make votes. But the administrators do an amazing job of communicating for the staff as well as the parents and the community. It's impossible to not put your own spin on it when you're communicating as, as your job, right? It's impossible for, for a person to not look at it in some way as an administrator, and that's not anybody's fault, it's just human nature. And so I'd like to hear it, I'd like to hear what's going on with our SIP teams more regularly. I'd like to hear from our parents, those parent representatives, more, more regularly.
I, I think, well, I think it's fine to have people come in, parent groups, whoever come in and, and address the board on the, on these types of matters, if they choose to do that. I mean, I think sometimes parent groups come together to work on things and they might not feel comfortable doing that. And I would also say, please put them at the very beginning of the meeting, so they don't have to sit through, you know, hours and hours and hours before they present, because they'll never, ever, ever come back.
Fair, very fair.
But I think it's, I think it's, it certainly is fine, and I just, it'll depend really on how they feel about it, I think. And, and other, other parent groups as well that you may want to invite in to-
Yeah, and really, that's kind of my intent, is to start the discussion, and do we, do we as a board, would we like to see this, right? And then give it back to Kevin, Kevin gets back to the admins, the admins go back to their SIP teams and say, do you guys like this, right? Or do you like, and this is not a, but, but I would like to hear from our, from our SIP teams and also our staff teams more regularly about what's working, what's not working, what do we, how are things going? I love celebrating our successes, let's celebrate them here, but then let's also just hear, let's be, let's have all of our community members be more present, because we cannot respond to public comments within a meeting. It's not, it's not an option. We're not able to respond directly to a public comment during that meeting because of open meetings, X situations, but, but I think, I think it would, I think it would help us.
Would the SIP teams ever work together, like from the different buildings, or would we hear from four different representatives? How did you-
I think Kevin's probably good, yeah.
The, the board had asked, you know, to periodically have, you like hearing from the building administrators and periodically having the building administrators come, you know? And so we're going to start towards the end of this year, bring them in to talk a little about how the year went and some of the challenges and so forth. But at that time, they could also have SIP team members, you know, sharing as well, you know? So that way, periodically throughout the year, you would have various buildings represented, and when it was their time, you could have staff, you could have SIP, you know, you could do that.
I mean, very much like how the, the four teachers who were here this evening, you know, who waited for us until 9:30, but their words were, were 10 minutes, but I think that they gave us, I mean, I actually found myself like tearing up when the kindergartner teachers were talking, but they gave us so much insight in those 10 minutes, more than we could have gotten out of any pie chart, more than we could have gotten out of any survey, or any other, other information. And I'd love, I'd, I'd love to get that from our parent teams as well as our, as well as our staff teams.
I like the idea of structuring it like a school update. So I know previous year, occasionally we'd get like a, a report from the admin team and the board docs, but I think it's really nice to have the public hear some of those things, too. As far as the tabled discussion of meeting efficiency, I think it'd just be important to keep the report short and, and to the point, so you know, everyone wants to share everything, and that's fantastic, but we do have to make sure we're getting to board business in an efficient way, so I'd just say-
Yeah, and that's kind of why I wanted it to be on every meeting and to have it be a little bit more regular, because then you don't get to a point where you haven't heard from somebody in two months, because then you've got a lot of stuff, whereas if you hear from folks more often, you don't get to a point where it's like, information dump.
I just, I, I want to be respectful of the admin's time, though.
And the SIP team, the parents' time.
And the parents' time, that we're not having-
I mean, I guess what I'd recommend is for us to give that direction to Kevin, that if the board's in agreement, that we would like to see, you know, more SIP team slash teacher involvement in school updates, and, and have you come back to us with a recommendation on frequency and how that would work, how the admin, you know, what the admin team wants to see, and what they're comfortable with. I mean, I, you know, they're, they're, they might have some caution around this, too, I'm not sure, but I think it's, they need to weigh in on this as well.
You know, they, they wouldn't necessarily need to be present. It could just be a discussion item on every agenda, and Kevin brings a report from the SIP team that is on the agenda, that, that could be read by the school board, and then discussed if they wanted to have a discussion on it or turn it into an actionable item after that. We used to bring the, the different groups in, I want to say it was once a month, Joel, right? And they would come and make a presentation to us, whether it was the sixth grade teachers or the math department, or early childhood, and, and it was very nice to hear, but it did get lengthy, okay? Because they wanted to, you know, give you a report, so it might be better off if it started out as just a, a memo to the board, and, you know, make sure it's a discussion item on the agenda, so that the community can see what this report says. And then from there, if you want to bring a group in for more questions or information, you can, that would be a little bit more respectful of the admin's time to begin with, and then let it evolve from there a little bit. But I, I'm, I'm fine with the idea, I mean, I think, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I- I don't want to create more work for the admins.
See, Jess wanted to say something.
Oh, sorry, Jess.
Jess?
Sorry. I, I was just going to say that I agree with Gary. I think an easy way to do it is to not necessarily bring them physically in every time, but have that consistent flow of information that the voice is being heard, and, you know, and then also just trusting that Kevin and the administrators will know when the right opportunity to bring parents or teachers to the meeting, just as they did tonight, which, by the way, I just have to, like shout out to the elementary school teachers for their energy that they brought, it's so amazing. And so I think they kind of know, too, when it's, when it's important for us to hear directly from those various stakeholder groups.
So Kevin, do you want to take that back to the team and just see if they have any other thoughts to add? All right, are we good? Presentation of monthly financials is next. Kim?
We got there, Kim, we got there.
All right, good evening. We have the February financial report for you, and during the month of February, the district received $220,000 from the state. There's just under $19,000 of fiscal year 21 payments voucherd, but that have not been released. All of the revenue receipts from the state were in the ed fund, and again, we received our FY '21 evidence-based funding in the amount of $120,000. And in the, oh, and in the ed and tort funds, revenues are slightly below prior year averages. In the O and M funds, they're slightly higher, and the transportation, they fluctuate from year to year based on the timing of state payments, so there's a lot of variability there. As far as expenditures go, in the ed and tort funds, they're comparable to the prior year without contingencies and below prior year with contingencies. And so just as a reminder, we put those contingencies in because we did not know what our staffing needs would look like with COVID and things like that. And as of right now, again, depending a little bit on what happens with in-person, we should not really have to tap into, into our contingencies this year, so that, that's positive news for the district. And then on the O and M fund, expenditures to date were 48.66% spent to date, and last year, 55.27% spent. And then right now, our expenditures are lower than average in the transportation fund. We still need to work on getting the board to approve the amendments for this current year, so I hope to have those at the April meeting for you. And then, let's see, investments, we have like 16 point, almost $5 million invested right now. That will continue to decline until we get our tax payments the end of May, beginning of June. And interest is pretty much at 0%, so we're not, our interest projections will be below, actual, actual be below what I projected for this year, because the rates just continue to fall. And then one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention this year, so far on the lunch report, we're doing a little bit better than we have in prior years. Our food cost is down. Obviously, we're not serving as many meals as we normally do. Salaries are down just slightly in the custodial piece because of the way we have reclassified something. But our reimbursements, the, if you look at, I don't know, the fourth line down under the revenues, the meal operational reimbursement has been 200 and almost $33,000. The summer, the food program that we're on now is actually providing us with more revenue than we get, would get under the National School Lunch Program. So that's, again, you know, there's so many unexpected things that are happening this year. Nothing is normal, you can't trend things, it's, it's very difficult, because nothing is the same. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention quickly. And then the other reports are there. Does anybody have questions? Okay. And the next item will be mine, yep.
Ready to move on to action items? So we do have a couple of action items tonight. The first is the approval of the authority for additional March 2021 expenditures. Does anybody have any questions for Kim on the content that was shared in board docs? So motion to approve?
So moves.
Second.
Oh, did you make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Okay, the second action item is approving, approval of building automation system bid. Anybody have any questions before we call for the motion?
Well, can I just highlight-
Well, can I just highlight though that the bids came in below what we had projected? So I have good, all, the, the two big ones did, so that's nice news that we have a little bit of money to, um, utilize for some other projects, so.
Awesome. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the building automation system replacement at Westmont High School with Alteron Sisirco in the amount of, uh, $516,360 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the approval of plumbing project bid. Any questions before we move to motion?
I had a question on that. What was the need for, it seems the majority of this is from Miller for upping the, in, the in-pipe from a two inch to a three inch for the water? What was the need for that? I know typically that would happen if you were adding water needs at a school, but.
It's, um, part of the life sa- tenure life safety survey and it, it's a requirement
Okay.
that we have to do that.
Okay, just because it was the biggest, by far the biggest chunk at like sixty some odd thousand dollars, I wanted to understand, thank you.
That's helpful. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the pump, plumbing projects for Manning Elementary, Miller Elementary, Westmont Junior High School and Westmont High School with Dave Slotwich Plumbing in the amount of $104,000 and $104,452 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Okay, and the last item for approval is the approval of the asbestos abatement contract. Any questions here? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the asbestos abatement contract for Manning Elementary School with Kinseal Contracting Group, Inc. in the amount of $11,745 as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Stromeyer?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Kim. We, the next agenda item is the superintendent's report.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, one is, I mentioned this earlier this evening, uh, we have our spring break coming up and, you know, we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel with COVID-19, but we're still not through this pandemic. And so just a reminder to families, if they are planning on traveling during spring break, that we're asking that their children quarantine before returning in-person learning. If they receive a test upon returning, their quarantine time is seven days, this is CDC guidelines, if they're not tested then their quarantine is 10 days. So, um, we respectfully ask our parents to follow those guidelines. And then the other thing, um, we have a special board meeting next week on the 23rd, primarily for, um, the staffing plan, but I'm just seeing if the board will be open to this, sorry Gary. But, uh, we're at a point now where I, we're ready for a board workshop for the strategic plan. So if we wanted to add that to the agenda, we can, otherwise, we'll schedule another, uh, meeting to do the board workshop.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, Kevin, I wasn't really, uh, planning on being there that long that evening. I mean, that's just, I mean, if the board wants to be there, I'll be there, but that wasn't my, my plan.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? I mean, I'd, I'd like to see the strategic plan move forward so I can make it work if, if you think it's a.
I, I can't, it's my son's birthday that day, I could come for a short period, but I'm happy to.
Well, let's, let's, let's stick to the original one, so the meeting then will be at South. Originally I was going to move it to the junior high if we could, but, uh, and then I'll talk to the admin team and we'll set up another date for the, uh, but not too far into the future, we're, we're ready for that board workshop.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Kevin?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. The next agenda item is board reports, are there any board reports tonight?
I just wanted to clarify, Kevin, with the, the quarantine for the, um, spring break. So I think the, the really hard thing with pandemic, I think, is because these, these aren't policies, they're, they're guidance within our schools and we could never write policies for this stuff because they change every two minutes. But I do have a concern over, especially this last week with the, um, high school situation, there's a lot of confusion of who needed to quarantine and for how long. And I think the, the messaging related to spring break is really, can be confusing too. And I was looking at our website under our COVID section and there isn't anything about this on here. And the communication I've gotten as a parent from the school has not been very clear with that too. So I just encourage that we make sure we're getting on the same page with, among the, the RN staff and communication to parents and that our website reflects, it's just, I know how difficult it is, but just to make sure the messaging is clear so parents can follow up with the appropriate.
Sure, yep, definitely.
Makes sense.
And I have a question, I don't mean for this to be like more of a discussion or anything, but with like efficiency and like the committees, is that something that could be handled within, I don't know, the agenda committee or, uh, what, um, our policy committee, and with the efficiency of the board, is that something that's handled in one of the committees?
I mean, I feel like that's a full board discussion when the time comes.
Well, I mean, just the discussion, maybe organizing and then the proposal comes that this is what we can do and that can be voted on.
Oh, I see what you're saying, like have a subcommittee address it.
A subcommittee discuss it and then bring forth a proposal.
I don't know, it's, I don't know, and then, you know, the best committee that.
I mean, I think that's worth considering.
Yeah, we can do that, it sounds like the board has indicated that they would like to do that when the new board comes.
Yep.
So we could do that when the new members join and.
Right.
I think that's a great idea.
Sounds good. Any other board reports? All right, so the last agenda item is a public comment, are there any more public comments tonight?
You get an applause, too.
Okay, Dana, hey Jack, has a public comment.
On. The presentation that we heard from all the different grade levels is brand-new information for parents. We're hearing this for the first time tonight. So I wanted to bring a, a few things that hit me while I was listening to that as a parent to your attention. The word silent lunch. Silent lunch for five-year-olds? Five-year-olds. Just, I want you to stew in that for a bit. And then we have, we're going to a full day, but we're going to keep our remote kids in the classrooms with our in-person kids. So now my student who is in-person is going to be on their computer from 8:15 until 2:00. Same as we're doing now in a hybrid, we're just going to extend that out till 2:00. When I am choosing in-person, that is not what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for my student to remote learn in a different place. I'm looking for my student to learn in-person. But if we're going to keep the remote kids in and we're going to keep them involved in the classroom and we're going to keep everybody connected, there's no way to do that other than my kid has to be on a computer too. And I get that, but that's a problem. That needs a solution. We can't just say, look at us, we did it, we're in full day in-person. Because that's kind of a cap-out. We're not in full day in-person learning, we're remote learning at Manning School. That's the truth, that's the honesty of what is happening inside of those classrooms. So we can't just say, we did it, because we didn't. We didn't accomplish the goal of what we're saying we're going to do. And then, when Ms. Peterzak was up here talking about the instructional time, Manning's only going to add a half hour of instructional time. We could have accomplished that with the extension to noon that we were talking about last month. And here we are, we're going to keep the kids till, till 2:00. We did it, we're in full day learning. But most of that time isn't spent on instruction, it's spent doing all of these other things. So as a parent, when I'm hearing those things, I'm like, wait, are we really accomplishing what we're saying we, we want to accomplish? I heard a lot of questions about high school testing and this and that. I did not hear one person on this board ask a question about our special ed students, not one of you. And that is an issue that I take to heart. My student who is a special ed student now has to be on their computer from 8:15 to 2:00. Where he can't handle it right now, from 8:15 to noon? And now we're just going to say, handle it. Because, why? And we're, and we're hearing, as we're hearing all of this, we're hearing things like, you know, we might have to pull the rap teachers to be a sub over here so that student who needs rap isn't going to get rap, because that, they're now a teacher. And we're hearing, oh, they're going to get specials time, so it'll break up the day, but if we need a sub, we're going to move that specials teacher over here. That's not consistency for the students who need the consistency the most, which is our special ed students. They need that. There's a lot of holes in this plan and I realize that this plan had to be thrown together very, very quickly and I am not faulting anybody who came up with this plan. I just hope that the board sees the holes and isn't just like, we did it. Moving on. Because that is not the job at hand. The job at hand is to give equitable education to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Are there any other public comments?
I have a public comment to make this evening. I know it's been a long night, so, uh, for those of you who don't know, I'm, uh, addressing the community tonight as a member of the public, my name is Gary Armstrong and I guess I just want to take a moment and talk about the importance of this upcoming election. I know people are looking at it, they're seeing four board members running for four seats, why am I going out and voting? Well, the reality is that there is a second contest on that ballot for a two-year seat for board, uh, and that's a very important seat to have, uh, for the, for the board to have. And that is not an unopposed contest, that is a contested contest between two, uh, two people. One is a former resigned board member and the other is sitting here tonight, Dr. Adina Hoover. And you can go out into the social media world and you can see a whole list of questions that these candidates have answered and, and what you'll see from, from Dr. Hoover is very thoughtful, very, uh, precise, very energetic and very, um, longevity plans in there. And, and I strongly suggest that you go out and find those, those, those questions and answers and that you read them, but that's not the reason why I would vote for, um, character counts. And last year, uh, during the resignations, uh, Dr. Hoover, a, a frontline medical worker, a professional, a mother, decided it was important enough to step up and volunteer her time to serve the students of 201, the children of 201, your children, community. I, I, I hope you can hear that and please get out and vote on April 6th and, and vote like me, vote with Adina, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right, the next agenda item is future meetings and events. There's a special meeting of the Board of Education on March 23rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM, that's at.
South.
South School. Spring break is March 29th, 2021 through April 5th, 2021. Classes will resume on April 6th. Westmont Junior High meeting, uh, virtually is being held on April 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And Manning's PTO meeting will be April 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We do not need a second closed session, so, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a roll call to adjourn?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.